All to mean order. Tonight, we have a special presentation honoring the Albemarle High School Women's Track Team. I'm going to read a resolution, then ask council to adopt it, and then I'm going to ask the coach and any team members to come up front to present it. Resolution 2317, a resolution honoring Albemarle Women's Track Team. Whereas 2023, Albemarle High School Women's Track Team traveled to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association 1A State Championship, held at the North Carolina Agriculture and Technical University in Greensboro on May the 19th, and represented their school and hometown very well. And whereas the Albemarle High School Women's Track Team was the smallest team at the state track meet, but made a huge impact as they had 11 team members to qualify, along with three members of the men's track team. And whereas Albemarle High School Women's Track Team members consisting of Mary Grace Crowell, Abigail Clayton, Amari Baldwin, and Akayla Garrett finished first place in a four by 400 meter relay, shattering the previous state record by finishing with a time of 3 minutes 57 seconds. And whereas Akayla Garrett also won first place in his 200 meter dash, setting a new record of 24 and 25 seconds, .25 seconds, first place in the 100 meters with a new state record of 13.52 seconds, first place in 300 meter hurdles with a new state record of 40.4 seconds. And whereas Amari Baldwin finished second place in the state 1A Girls Triple Jump with a distance of 35 foot, two and a half inch. And whereas Jasmine Brown finished second place in the state 1A Girls Shot Put with a distance of 35 foot, 9.75 inches, and finished second place in the state 1A Girls Discus Throw with a distance of 106 foot, 10 inches. And whereas collectively, as a team, the Albemarle High School Women's Track Team finished second place overall as a team with a total of 83 points. And whereas the city of Albemarle also extend a special thanks to the Albemarle High School Track Coach, Lasagna Collins, Coach Brandon Wilson, Coach Bernard Henry, Coach Brandon Bowden, and Athletic Director Richard Davis for their hard work and dedication. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Albemarle, on behalf of the entire city, recognize the 2023 Albemarle High School Women's Track Team with this resolution for their outstanding accomplishments. And be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Albemarle does hereby adopt this resolution this the 19th day of June 2023. And council, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2317.
Move approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second, by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Go girls, go.
Will join me out front for the presentation. And I'll invite up the coach and any team members. I'll invite the coach up.
Kayla will actually get ready for national, she's going to Orton. And the other two young, couple of young ladies, they are actually AAU basketball, sports and everything carries a lot. And then with athletics in the summertime as well as education. Got some great young ladies that graduated Mary Grace Crowell, graduates going to college. So it's kind of hard to get them all together, but it's a great thing to be a representative of Albemarle High School for athletics as well as education, because that's more supporting thing of this whole thing.
Thank you very much. Item number three, approval of the minutes from the June 5 regular enclosed session.
May have approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second, by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Do I have any agenda adjustments? Moving on to number five, public hearings. Ordinance 2313, and I'm going to make an announcement. Ordinance 2313, item A, ordnance 2309, item B, and ordinance 2310, item C, are all open from the previous meeting and will be continued again tonight to our next meeting due to some issues that have not been able to get worked out tonight. So several people have been notified that we were going to continue it, so they didn't come up here tonight unless they wish to. This is a public hearing, it is open. Anyone who cares to speak first on ordinance 2313, please come forward.
So, the public hearing is open, just a question, is the petitioner here tonight?
I do not think he is.
Okay.
All right, council, I need to entertain a motion that we continue this to our next meeting.
So move.
Continue. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second, by Councilmember Dry, further discussion.
Is that just ordinance, is that just ordinance 2313 or?
Yes. We'll do them.
Okay, do them separately.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Again, ordinance 2309 is a public hearing. Is anyone care to speak for it before we move forward? Council, I entertain a motion to continue with it. Motion by Councilmember Hall to continue to the next meeting, second, by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ordinance 2310, again, public hearing, is anyone care to speak for or against? Council, again, I'll entertain a motion that we move it to the next meeting. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second, by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now moving to item D, ordinance 2313, consider request to rezone 1.54 parcel on North Carolina 2427 NC Bypass West from R10 General Residential Business District to General Highway Business District. Zoning map amendment 2305, and I'll ask staff to introduce.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council. We have our application here, is zoning map amendment 2305. The applicant is Ms. Keisha Jones. And it's located off of Highway 2427 near St. Martin Road, and it's tax record 3145. And it's a request to go from R10 General Residential District to GHBD, General Highway Business District. It's approximately 1.54 acres. Scroll down, staff. Our staff analysis, I won't repeat the tax record. Applicant statement for proposed request, rezoning would make this property available for commercial uses. There is no change regarding public safety, health, or regarding public welfare. The existing use right now is vacant, and the proposed would be commercial. To the north is R10, south is R10, east is General Highway Business District and R10, and to the west is R10 General Residential District. Utility services are provided to this parcel. The 2028 Land Use Plan, Future Land Use Map classifies this parcel and surrounding area as commercial. Commercial is defined as being areas generally located along major thoroughfares that contain a wide array of commercial uses. Typical retail uses include shopping centers, restaurants, and convenience stores. Other heavier uses may include mini warehouses and automobile sale lots. Development considerations include traffic compatibility with abutting residential areas and the appearance of new and existing development, as well as the availability of adequate infrastructure. This property is not located in any regulated floodplain or watershed. The subject tract right here is highlighted in blue on your screen, and it's along NC 2427 Bypass West. This is the future land use map plan. The red area where the star is located is the commercial area. This is just aerial photo of the property here, highlighted in blue.
What is that property to the right of the blue?
I believe it is habitat for humanity.
The restore, the restore, resale store.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, yeah.
It's, that piece of property in blue has just now been cleaned off.
The trees.
It's been cleaned off.
Here recently.
That's right.
Staff comments. So the applicant intends to rezone a 1.54 acre tract from R10 General Residential District to General Highway Business District in order to allow for commercial development on the property. The above said tract is contiguous to existing General Highway Business District. To the east there, does have some R10 in the back, which is, in addition, the future land use map references this area's commercial, which would favor the GHBD zoning for this parcel. Any future development of this site would be subject to required street plannings, buffer yard requirements setbacks, et cetera, per the city codes of ordinances. It's also important to note that for future development, that utility lines do pass along the property, which may impact the placement of structures on the property. Advertising requirements have been met for the city council meeting. So, given the proposed use, the parcels proposed used under the future land use plan, existing GHBD zoning to the east, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the consistency statement to the city council on June 1, 2023.
Counsel, this is a public hearing. Do you have any questions for staff? Hearing none, I hear, have Keisha Jones, the petitioner, who wishes to speak. Ms. Jones, if you come forward.
Good evening, city council and mayor.
Thank you.
Hi. I just want to add that I think that the most purposeful, purposeful use for that property would be what's zoned adjacent to it, which is the commercial. Right now, it was, I think, grandfathered in with the R10, and the restore is next to it, and there's a gas station, so we just think it would be best suited for commercial.
Counsel, will I have any questions of petitioner? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Most enclosed public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Counsel, you have before you ordinance 202023, and in your agenda, you have a consistency statement, an inconsistency statement, and a future land use map amendment statement. As you heard earlier, the zoning board recommended a consistency statement.
Move approval, ordinance 23 dash 23 with the consistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve 2323 with the consistency statement. Second, by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thank staff. Next item is announced delegation, Mr. Matt Jaeger. He's the portfolio manager with Retail Strategies, and he's coming forward to retail our strategic services and activities.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you so much for having us here. I know that your time spent and your agenda is valuable, so we appreciate and are honored by the invitation to present. As mayor mentioned, my name is Matt Jaeger. I work for a company called Retail Strategies out of Birmingham, Alabama. We work with municipalities across the country, aiding and assisting with retail recruitment into the market. So we have had a ongoing partnership with the city of Albemarle, going on to 10 years, which we're extremely proud of. We have enjoyed a lot of success partnering with the city and really trying to act as a force multiplier for the ongoing economic development projects here in Albemarle. So what we wanted to do this evening is to give a broader overview of Retail Strategies, what we do. Both myself and my colleague Cole Clark, we're focused on national retail recruitment, but we've also got a team that is focused on downtown strategic planning and implementation. Our downtown strategies team will speak a little bit to that this evening, and I will try to answer any questions about downtown strategies as intelligently as I can, but I may have to defer to my colleagues back home in Birmingham, and they can update you more specifically on that as we go. But what I'd also like to do is talk about our track record in the market, some of the success that we've had partnering with the city, the economic impact of new retail development in a market like Albemarle, and we'll be looking at some specific retailers that have opened here in Albemarle through the work that we've done. And then we'll also just take a snapshot shot of our ongoing recruitment efforts. We're in a public hearing, and so we don't want to reveal any ongoing recruitment prospects here at this time. We do have a non-redacted form that is delivered to the city manager, so tomorrow morning, you can beat down his door and find out specifics, but in a public setting, we want to remain confidential. The old saying, loose lips sink ships, still applies very much when it comes to retail real estate development. So without further ado, when we run through this, I would love to have some Q and A time at the end, and answer any questions that you might have about what we do and how our company works. So, like I mentioned, Retail Strategies, we began our partnership with Albemarle in 2014. Our company was founded in 2011, so not long after our company was founded, we began our partnership with the city, and we have continued that to the present day. Our company has grown from just retail recruitment and municipal advising services to a retail academy, which we host either onsite with different cities across the country, or in our home offices in Birmingham. Actually, tomorrow, we're hosting a number of cities from across the country in Birmingham in our classroom setting, which is a really interesting project. We try to train and teach cities on how to do recruitment and how to view their market the same way that a retailer does. And then our downtown strategies team, which is currently engaged with the city, and through both, through all of these, we do a lot of small business support. So we will look at a lot of data and demographics and research for your trade area here in Albemarle, and we want to support the local businesses with all of that research as well. As I mentioned earlier, we actively recruit retail businesses into the city of Albemarle. We would look at it more from a trade area perspective, and we'll talk about that as we go further. But ultimately, our goal is to attract new retail development into the city limits of Albemarle, using a lot of different tools in our toolbox, which we'll explore as well. Our downtown strategies team began their engagement with the city in the summer of 2021 through a partnership with the city and Electric Cities of North Carolina. They are developing or have developed a short-term, five-year strategic plan for downtown Albemarle. The focus of the vision was to enhance and accelerate the current revitalization efforts occurring in downtown Albemarle, provide a shared vision for the multiple downtown organizations and stakeholder groups, and provide short-term strategies to complement existing plans. The year one projects, which they've just wrapped up, include downtown shared parking agreement, as well as a vibrancy grant program. And some of you within the city may be more familiar with this work. Again, those are our colleagues back home in Birmingham, but I just wanted to touch on this, just a quick update while we're here for our downtown team. So retail recruitment, what Cole and I are primarily focused on is analyzing and assessing the market, so looking at your total trade area here in Albemarle. We do that in a number of ways. We look at data and demographic details. We've got a number of different software systems that we use to really look at the market the same way that a national retailer would. We want to analyze the market in a way that any large-scale development group would, so that we can give the city the tools necessary to attract top-flight retailers that aren't here already. And then most importantly, our team comes to Albemarle once a year, which is why we're here today, to see the market in person. So we tour the sites, we drive very slowly with our flashers on in the right-hand lane, and look at shopping centers and what availability is there, if there's new signage on buildings, and just get a feel of what's happening in your trade area here in Albemarle. A phrase that we use a lot in our office is called pleasant persistence. We just tap on the shoulders of retailers, developers, brokers, for retailers across the country, trying to promote sites in, here in Albemarle. We represent Albemarle, the number of trade shows across the country through ICSC and Retail Live, so our team specifically will travel to six shows this year, and part of that process is carrying sites and market information about Albemarle to retailers, brokers, and developers at these different shows. I mentioned earlier, really, our goal is to act as an investment multiplier for the work that the city is already doing. It's, you don't need me to tell you that there's a lot of positive momentum and growth in Albemarle, and we just want to complement the work that the city is already doing and just multiply the efforts through our ongoing recruitment. And then ultimately, I think we're probably at the most value is just years of experience. My background prior to joining our team was in commercial brokerage, leasing, and development, and our team brings a wealth of relationships, and we want to, we want to use those relationships to leverage opportunities here in Albemarle for retailers. So we wanted to look at over the past nine years, some of the retailers that we have had a hand in assisting with recruiting to Albemarle. So we want to be really conservative, because our work is a little nebulous at times. These are retailers that have opened in Albemarle during our engagement, and they opened on a site that our team promoted or pitched to them. So we took a site in Albemarle and presented it to either a real estate director or a broker for these brands. There's a number of them, and we've been really proud of the work that the team has done here in Albemarle, and hopefully have brought a lot of retailers that provide a lot of value to citizens here in the city. Ultimately, you know, what the people enjoy is extremely important, but we also want to try to quantify the value to some degree. So these are average sales volumes for each of these retailers. It's a nationwide per-store average, but these are your national averages as we can find through our research. So approximately, we estimate about $26 million worth of sales are generated here in Albemarle through these retailers. And then to the right, you'll see jobs that are on average created for each of these stores. So approximately 274 jobs for these retailers over a nine-year period. I think a lot of times, there's a lot of really big-ticket projects that, when you think of economic development, they're the first things that you think of, manufacturing jobs, large warehouse space. But we are really bullish on retail as an economic engine for your community. So we like to talk about why, why should a municipality invest resources in retail recruitment? And we kind of look at this retail recruitment ladder. You want to build a really strong base of great retailers that are doing a million dollars or more in sales every year, and as those stores begin to multiply, the stores in that next ladder now look at the market more favorably, and we want to keep building that ladder, kind of putting bricks on top of one another to grow the economic engine for retail in your community. Obviously, I think from a macroeconomic standpoint, retail is extremely important here in Albemarle, but also just as an amenity, having new retailers open is a great sign of progress for your community. So how do we do this? What are some of the tools in our toolbox? As I mentioned earlier, we create a custom trade area for the city of Albemarle. Oftentimes, I know from the city's business, you really are hemmed into your municipal boundaries. Our team creates a trade area that extends beyond your municipal boundaries, and what we want to do is capture the full breadth of consumers that are shopping in Albemarle, which is significant, and we'll talk about how we develop that. Ultimately, we want to take that large data set, that trade area information, and use it to attract retailers to sites specifically within the municipal boundaries in Albemarle. So we want to look at all the people that are coming into your community to shop, and then we want to bring retailers that information and present them with sites here in Albemarle. One of the most effective tools that we have that's relatively new is mobile data tracking. Everybody here has got an iPhone or a smartphone, and they, somewhere deep, deep in the agreement that you signed or agreed to with Google Maps, was to be tracked. If you haven't heard that yet somewhere else, I hate to break the news to you, but everybody is being tracked to some degree. We want to use that information, again, to just provide the best context and provide the most compelling narrative about Albemarle that we can to retailers. And so we'll look at a map here for the Walmart. I know Walmart sometimes elicits a wide variety of emotions, but they're still the largest retailer in the world, and it is probably your most magnetic retailer here in Albemarle. As you can see here, that heat map, the darker the color represents a, how, that's your dense, the most dense area where shoppers are coming from. So using this tool, we can see where shoppers are coming from to shop in the Walmart here in Albemarle.
Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Is there a way that that can be fixed? I mean, I.
He's trying to figure it out.
Is that?
It's okay.
Could he use, could he use the other one?
I believe it's coming from the microphone. He's not doing, he's not talking.
This one's got green light.
Where I don't want. Cut that one off, sit there side by side.
Okay, how's that? Oh. Hello.
Try it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a little bit better. Let's see, maybe just turn it the other way. Okay, so here we are, Walmart in Albemarle. One of the things that we want to look at with any of your large national retailers that are here is really study where their consumers are coming from. I'm sure many of you feel like Albemarle is separated from the greater Charlotte MSA to some degree, and what we want to really indicate is that you're much closer to this large population of shoppers than you realize, and the numbers really bear that out, especially for your Walmart. This Walmart sees over 500,000 visitors per year, which is pretty exceptional. If you see further down, within the state of North Carolina, it creates a top 30 Walmart statewide. Seeing over 500,000 visits estimated per year is usually reserved for a store that would be in a much higher densely populated suburban market, either outside of Raleigh or closer into Charlotte. The Walmart here is a fantastic performer, just in terms of traffic. Obviously, we don't have exact sales figures for this specific store, but we imagine that it does really well. Why is this important? We can take this information, we can take this data and the mobile data tracking that we can pull from our software and present this to other retailers that want to follow closely to high-performing Walmarts. This is a great recruitment tool for us. We're talking to retailers that aren't already in the market, but they always want to be near Walmart. You probably see this as you travel around the state and really around the country. Walmart creates a pretty vibrant retail ecosystem wherever they go, especially if the Walmart is a really strong performing store. So the Walmart in Albemarle is exceptional statewide, probably in your top 15% of stores across the state of North Carolina. Things like this and finding this data is extremely important to our team as we represent you, represent and promote the market to retailers, and this is just one of many examples that we could go through to try to indicate the strength of the retail market that's here in Albemarle. Another important tool for us that we look at, when we can create a polygon shape on the map that represents your trade area, we can also estimate total dollars leaving that marketplace. So we've got kind of an odd-shaped polygon for Albemarle. We can, through a number of different data points, estimate how much money is leaving the market and how it's being spent elsewhere. And so we look at specific retailer types, and you can see that broken out here in different line items. This is really going to inform how we create a prospect list of fresh new retailers that have the best opportunity in Albemarle. So looking at this leakage report, excuse me, you can see building material and garden equipment stores, approximately $40 million per year is leaving your trade area and going elsewhere. What we want to do is focus on retailers that could capture that market and keep it here in Albemarle. As you keep going down that list, you can see food and beverage stores, which would include grocery stores, has close to $18 million leaving the market each year. That represents an opportunity, not just for national retailers, but for local retailers that are looking for opportunities, merchants that are here in Albemarle looking for the right fit for the market. We can help guide a lot of that decision-making and provide a lot of data and demographics for your local retailers as well. Another large one that you guys probably feel is, I think, clothing stores, over $41 million a year estimated to leave the market. So those are how we start to put together a prospect list by looking at the dollars leaving the market. How do we keep those and retain those here in Albemarle? So again, using time in the market, annual analysis of your data and demographics, creating that custom trade area, reviewing the mobile data patterns for your most successful retailers, and then looking at that leakage report helps us to create a fairly concise prospect list and really an annual recruitment focus. So where we are right now in the process, this is what we're searching for, and this is what we're actively recruiting in Albemarle. National and regional grocers that are more updated, newer, larger footprint, full-service restaurants, your fast casual restaurants that you probably see elsewhere that really ought to be in Albemarle as well. Upgraded QSR concepts, QSR being a quick service restaurant or a drive-through. Chick-fil-A is a great example of that. That has been, you know, I think, an area of need in the market for a while. Clothing and apparel retailers, home improvement retailers, home goods retailers, shoe retailers, hobby and craft retailers, and then several different high-end regional convenience stores that are growing across the state. We feel like there's a great market here in Albemarle. For our big-picture vision, where we're really focused, again, is to really establish Albemarle's unique custom trade area with national retailers, their brokers, and developers, either locally here in the state of North Carolina or nationally, and letting them know that there's great opportunity here in Albemarle for new development. We want to recruit large-market NC, North Carolina-based developers that want to actively market, monitor the market for opportunities. Again, that's going into our well of relationships and making sure that different developers that work with brands that we're familiar with that are a fit for Albemarle understand the opportunities that exist here. Oftentimes, that means our team also making contact with local property owners and helping to facilitate communication between brokers, developers, retailers, and local property owners here in Albemarle. And then again, we want to really emphasize the viability of the retail market here in Albemarle with your biggest players in Charlotte and Raleigh and the opportunities that exist for retail development in Albemarle. So now we'll take a look at a few different retailers. These are specific brands that we are working with and actively recruiting in Albemarle. Again, I cannot reveal any names at this time. Now, there is an unredacted form of this available in the city manager's office, and I believe there may be a time to present that as well, but we can't do that in a public setting. So if you ask me for names, I cannot give them, but would be happy to talk about some more of these more in depth. But a number of these national and regional convenience stores, there's just a large amount of traffic coming through your primary corridor here through Albemarle. And a lot of these gas station convenience stores, they're trying to elevate the consumer experience. Not, none of these are specific examples that are here, but things like Sheets, Wawa, Royal Farms, brands like Buc-Ee's are growing across the country and throughout the Carolinas. There's a lot of opportunity for them when there is high traffic counts and good retail density, which you have here in Albemarle. So we're looking to bring some of those brands here to Albemarle through our recruitment effort. A national burrito fast casual, this is an industry leader in this segment. It's extremely popular all across the country. It's one that we have been recruiting for a number of years, and slowly but surely, the feedback that we're receiving from the retailer is more and more favorable. It's a big part of our process is that oftentimes, from the time a site is selected and approved to the time that it's actually constructed and open, it may take two to three years, and it may even take two to three years to get to an approved site. And so we always take a long-term position with some of these retailers that maybe now feel aspirational in two to three years. They're very realistic. So this is a great example of two to three years ago, our team was getting pretty unfavorable feedback from this retailer about your market. Now, slowly but surely, we're getting more and more positive and favorable feedback. And so we're going to continue to pursue that prospect. A national cell carrier that we have been recruiting for some time in Albemarle. We recently learned that they are very close to the finish line and signing a lease here in your main retail corridor at a former Wells Fargo Bank. That's a site that was presented by our team to the retailer. I don't think they're done yet, but they are very close. The quote from the broker is that they're on the one-yard line. So we're hopeful that that'll finish up soon. Recently, there's a shopping center here in Albemarle that sold at the beginning of the year. We want to always kind of stay on the cutting edge of your commercial real estate market and know the big transactions as they're occurring. A lot of times, a sale indicates future plans for large retailers. So understanding that sales price and what it implies for the term of the lease that remains, something that our team is continuing to work on and do research and dig into. And then another regional grocer, they announced at the end of 2022, they hope to open over 30 stores in the Carolinas in 2023 and 2024. This would be, this would be a significant upgrade of grocer for the Albemarle market. So they are analyzing a site that's here in the market, and they're studying it for feasibility for new development. We're not sure if that would be a 2023 project for them, maybe a 2024 project, but it would be a great addition to your trade area. National smoothie QSR, this is probably the market leader for this particular type of retailer. Again, this is one similar to the burrito restaurant that we mentioned earlier. For quite some time, provided unfavorable feedback about the market, but our team just stayed pleasantly persistent with the brand. And we recently learned that they're very close to signing a lease at a site here in Albemarle. A national soft goods retailer, that would be anything from clothing to interior decor. Excuse me. They are reviewing a vacancy that's here in Albemarle that was presented by our brand. Oftentimes, brokers have to take sites that they believe to be viable to a real estate committee. The committee might only meet once a month. Then they've got to go through an agenda and look at sites, provide feedback, and go from there. So there's a bit of a process. But this brand's real estate director has a site that's being reviewed by the real estate committee here in Albemarle that was presented by our team. A national sandwich fast casual, this would be any number of different sub companies. They have got an approved LOI, which is kind of your first step towards signing a lease and actually opening a business. But they have an approved LOI for a site in the market. This is a great win for Albemarle, and we're continuing to learn more about the specifics of that deal. But as we learn more, we, you know, provide it in information to the city through reports like this. A national burger fast casual, this is another brand that continues to grow across the country, a little bit of an elevated QSR concept, and they are reviewing vacancy opportunities here in Albemarle as well. That last one got cut off, but that's another regional convenience store that's actively looking to really pursue opportunities around Asheville and Wilmington. But we've got a close relationship with their real estate director and their site selection team. This is a brand that, right now, Albemarle was a pass, and they felt like it was too close to a market that they're not comfortable entering right now, being Charlotte. But again, we work with these real estate directors and these site selectors for years on end to just stay persistent, continue to promote the market, continue to promote sites. We know that the viability for this brand here in Albemarle makes a lot of sense. They've opened stores and markets that have a lot of shared or similar data and demographic overlap. And so over time, we continue to pursue these brands, and that really does make a big difference. One of your big national clothing retailers, they're currently looking at a large box vacancy here in Albemarle. Again, the broker has taken it to the brand. The brand is reviewing internally. That could take 30 to 60 days to get feedback from them. And then we've got to take their feedback and try to overcome any sort of questions that they have about the market or the site. Ultimately, what our team wants to try to do is connect brands directly with landlords or their agents. We're not a broker, but we just want to promote those sites and bring those parties together and see if they'll dance at the prom. And then finally, a national hair cutter. There's a number, a very kind of unique and niche retail type that has got a high degree of leakage in Albemarle would be personal care and wellness stores. And so oftentimes, that indicates a lot of drugstore uses being shipped out of the market. Haircutting places are also in that category. And so there's a number of vacancies being reviewed by several different national haircutting services. And one of them has indicated interest in Albemarle in the past. So we continue to pursue them. They've got a franchisee that would look to expand and grow a store in the market. And we try to work through that process with the retailer, try to advise franchisees on market information. And ultimately, all of this is to promote the general economic growth here in Albemarle.
So before you go on to the next page.
Sure.
Two things, will we get a hard copy of this?
Yes, so this, these notes were pulled from a conference report that we provided to the city when we were at an ICSC trade show in Charlotte earlier this year.
Okay, so we will get one, correct?
Yes.
So when we get it, will it be updated and what was left off that one be on there?
Yes.
Okay, and the spelling of Stanley on this particular, somebody needed to do some better editing on this.
Yes.
Stanley is used, it is spelled without an E.
Correct.
And on this particular sheet, you've got it with both, so.
Yes, that's, that is an oversight on my part, so I'm sorry about that.
Quick thing.
Yeah, exactly. Well, so yes, there's an unredacted form of these notes that exist already with the city. So we can make sure that an unredacted form is provided to council. We've just returned from another large trade show in Las Vegas, and a more up-to-date version of these notes will be supplied later in the summer, both in a redacted form that can be shared publicly in this setting and also an unredacted form that can be looked at in private.
I have one question. What's a hair cutter?
What's a hair cutter? I don't know what they are. My wife is my hair cutter. This would be a great clip, sports clips, any of your national, typically franchise-based, haircutting studios. That would be what falls into that category. But now I'd like to just open it up for any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions?
One thing that I didn't see in your active recruitment is anything related to a full-service restaurant.
That was in there.
A full-service?
Full-service sit-down restaurant, yes.
I've seen the sandwich shops and stuff. I'm thinking in mine like Steakhouse.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I was wondering when you're gonna ask.
So can you go back and pull it up on there?
Well, we don't have any notes about a specific retailer in that type right now, but it is a focus area.
Provide names, but I was looking for full-service as a.
So yeah, that's the, I would say the restaurant industry in the last three years has probably seen the most dramatic shifts in consumer sentiment of any retail type in our country, mostly due to COVID-19. I think everybody remembers that at some point in mid to late 2020 and into 2021, it seemed like every restaurant that you were familiar with was now just going to be a takeout restaurant or a drive-through. Consumer sentiment has shifted rapidly towards full-service restaurants. There was a time in the late 90s, early 2000s where Applebee's and Charlie's, I mean, you name it, there's probably five or six of these large brands that popped up, and they went all over the country, and then they just stopped. A great example is that Red Lobster is extremely popular wherever they open, and they do not open new stores right now. They just won't do it. So a number of these brands are owned by large publicly traded companies. Darden Restaurant Group is probably one of the more high-profile ones. They own brands like Olive Garden and Longhorn Steakhouse. 2023 really marks kind of a difference in opinion for them in terms of growth because, again, they've really stalled out on new store development. But Longhorn Steakhouse and Olive Garden both announced at the beginning of this year that they want to get more aggressive in opening new stores, and we've seen that play out in the Carolinas, especially Olive Garden. So those are, those are two that we say, okay, we've got opportunity in the market. There's clearly people leaving this market for full-service restaurants. We've got a publicly traded brand that's well-capitalized, that people are very familiar with. The demographics fit. So those are the sort of retailers that we want to actively pursue because it seems like all the pieces to the puzzle are in place.
How can you, how can you take that and relate it to downtown?
Sure.
Because most of what you've talked about, we've got an East Albemarle out there.
Absolutely.
And I agree, I like what's out there.
Sure.
Great shopping and that sort of thing. But how do we relate that to downtown?
Sure, so as it comes, in terms of retail development downtown, you know, retailers that do really well in downtown have a totally different set of metrics that they're going to look at and find attractive versus a national retailer that wants to be near Walmart. I think what our team can do that's extremely beneficial for your downtown, because typically downtown retailers are going to be local retailers, local entrepreneurs, local people taking chances, starting new businesses. What we want to be able to do is provide that full suite of market knowledge, data, demographics, consumer psychographics, all the research that we do on behalf of the city, provide that to local entrepreneurs free of charge so that they can make the best decision possible when it comes to putting capital at risk and starting new businesses in your downtown core. So full-service restaurants, we would love to see an Olive Garden open up in 2024 in Albemarle. I think all of y'all would as well, too. If we can make that happen, maybe we can do an off-site council meeting, and dinner's on us. We'd love to take you out. However, there is likely a very talented person in your market that could open a full-service restaurant, and they could open it downtown. And all of a sudden, you have got something that's community building. It's a, you know, a blighted former vacancy is now filled with a new local restaurant. That's just an example, but we can provide that person with a lot of data and information that's hopefully beneficial for them and ultimately, again, goes back to just trying to grow the retail economic base here in Albemarle.
I didn't see an office supply place.
Sure.
We do not have one.
And I would say the reason that you don't have one is because those are the sort of products that are most easily purchased online now. We could definitely look to try for an Office Depot, a Staples, but oftentimes, again, those stores aren't looking to open another 40,000 or 50,000 square foot facility in a new market. They're trying to push a lot of sales online. And again, they've, they've just gotten beaten up by groups like Amazon and even Walmart selling a lot of office supplies online.
You indicated that you all visit Albemarle once per year.
Right.
And so just so when you go to trade shows and things of that nature, how often are you in contact with our staff so that you got the? Like over the course of the year, we've approved numerous proposed subdivisions and our population standard potential for growth. You know, I want to make sure that you got the most accurate data whenever you go to these trade shows. So how often is that communication with our staff?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we are going to at least provide a quarterly or every three months, big update. That's just an update. That's our reporting back to the city so that you can see what our team is working on, similar to some of these notes. I would say our office is in communication with Michael and his team fairly regularly within that quarterly cadence. Anytime we get a positive piece of feedback from a retailer, we use a software system that just allows us to catalog and index those messages. We want to share it as soon as we can. And so I would say typically, there's a quarterly update, and then throughout that quarter, there's a variety of touchpoints. We're going to refresh our data for the market every single year, looking at that trade area information. But a lot of that's automated through the software that we use.
One of the things, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Bramley, is the downtown strategies. I guess you saw that Lindsay Alman will be coming to us with a report on that in the next meeting or two. She's been working with downtown strategy since she's came on board, and that's one of the reasons we're kind of behind in that one because we did not have an economic development director.
Okay.
So she'll be bringing us some information on what's going on in the downtown within the next couple of meetings. Mr. Alders, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, Matt, thank you for the update. Just real quick to the mayor's point, we've got a new economic development director. What is the communication between your firm and the new economic development director?
Yeah, so fortunately, I'd say about 30 days ago, Michael introduced us to Lindsay, and since then, we've had two really productive Zoom meetings, just her and I, bringing her up to speed on the work that we're doing. And ultimately, you know, whether it's with council, the mayor, with Michael or Lindsay, we want to kind of have that regular face-to-face interaction so that we stay aligned. You know, we kind of share, we are going to be your retail real estate experts, but everybody in this room is way more qualified to tell me about Albemarle than I would be just looking at the data. And so we want to stay aligned with the city's vision, and we want to hear from local team members here in the city. So since Lindsay came on board, we've had two really productive meetings via Zoom. I think we were a little disappointed that we were going to miss each other this evening. I think she's on vacation. But we can, we plan to continue that sort of communication with her. So again, we're trying to just really multiply the efforts that her team is working on and anything we can do to assist with projects she's got going on on an as-needed basis. We've got an open-door policy.
And just as a follow-up, I think you mentioned that you guys are based out of Birmingham. And is there any other training that our economic development director could attend or participate in that would, you know, put us ahead? Because there's a lot of competition, you know, of course, you know, for retail operations. So is there any specific training that we could have our people come to?
Yeah, I would say, you know, we're in Birmingham, which is a little further out. One of the things that Lindsay and I have already talked about was her attendance at some of some of the more local and regional trade shows that we attend. There's a lot of regional Carolina-specific trade shows for the retail industry that occur in Charlotte, just down the road from here. So ICSC is likely the biggest trade organization for retailers and retail real estate practitioners. They have a trade, they have a show in Charlotte every single year, it's in March, obviously it just occurred a couple of months ago, but I've already mentioned to Lindsay and to the team here, we would love for you to come, we'd love for you to walk with us as we work the showroom floor, talking to retailers, meeting with brokers and developers, and really just seeing how the sausage is made, because it is a process and it's a pretty complex and nuanced process. Retailers are extremely sophisticated when it comes to site selection and how they view markets, and I think it's always good, one, for people from the city of Albemarle to see that process in action and see how our team enters into it, but then also it's really beneficial for retailers to just have one or maybe two relationships at a city. You know, the process of opening a new store is a heavy lift on the city side and on the developer's side, and anytime there's a positive interaction or a positive relationship between those parties before something gets going, that's really, really valuable. I'm sure all of y'all can think of a time when a new business, new retailer was trying to get started, and either through the permitting process or the zoning process, there was some heartburn that was experienced by all parties. Anytime there's a personal touchpoint, a personal relationship, I think that really helps that whole process go more smoothly. So that would probably be my first recommendation. There's an ICSC show coming up in Atlanta in October, our full team will be there, we normally always have a pretty large booth to host meetings, and so anytime somebody from the city wants to come, and if you've got planned meetings, you can use our booth for that, and then like I said, we love having cities come with us and see the process in action, meeting with developers, meeting with retailers, I think that would be the most logical entry point, and ICSC, it's got a lot of educational material that you can get involved with as well that helps you understand the process of retail and retail real estate.
Pleasure.
Thank you. ICSC.
Yes, yes, ICSC.
Give us what that means, we don't do.
International Council of Shopping Centers, is what it means.
So I have a couple of comments or questions partly from the presentation and partly that I had put down before you ever came.
Okay.
I was looking forward to hearing you. Back in March, we were given the yearly recap from 2022, the gap analysis.
Sure.
And I saw a portion of that within your presentation today.
Correct.
It appears that the one that was in the presentation today is an updated one.
Sure.
But probably this one I have in front of me is 2020 information.
Sure.
And I think I saw 2022, that's the reason I asked, making sure we had a hard copy of that.
Correct, yes.
I do have many years' worth of gap analysis.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
From just keeping them because I was very interested when we got you all, hoping that we would see a whole lot of change in growth. How long, you've been with this organization for three years, is that right?
So personally, I've been on our team for about a year and a half.
Okay.
Prior to that, worked for a private developer in Birmingham focused on mixed-use properties, and prior to that, as a retail asset manager doing leasing and management.
So how many different people have we had in the past since 2014 working with us? Because I don't, I don't remember ever seeing you all, I don't think.
I really am not sure, and I wouldn't want to say something that wasn't true.
Okay.
I really can just speak to my time on the team.
Gotcha, okay. And we will get a leakage report then.
Correct.
We're going to get an updated leakage report. We have what I didn't see on here when you looked at the red at Walmart.
Sure.
Okay? And maybe I did, but it wasn't as red as I thought it would be.
Okay.
Is we have a lot of traffic from the lake.
Okay.
A lot of traffic from the lake, and we cannot disregard that.
Sure.
There are a lot of people that are here during the week, we have a lot of people here during the summer at both of our lakes that come right in here to town to shop at all different kinds of places. And so that is, you know, that's, we hear Mr. Bramlett talk about our population in Albemarle is 16.5 or so, but if you look at the numbers of people that use 28001 as their zip code, it is many, many more than that.
Absolutely.
So just throwing that out there. Are you familiar that we have now got a, we have a campus, a college campus here in town?
It's Pfeiffer University, correct?
Right, you do know about that, very good.
Yeah.
Because that's bringing a whole different or additional group of people downtown that I hope that we're actually able to capture. And lastly, do you know or have you been told about the Albemarle Business Center?
I have not.
Okay, that is something I would love for you and Lindsay, you and Michael, someone to talk about, because that is a huge piece of property, 200-plus acres, that may be a multi-use business park.
Sure.
And, you know, if we look at anything going in there, there's always the idea that it's not just going to be industry, it might be other things as well, so I don't want us to disregard that piece of property. And you said we should have a hard copy of this already or tomorrow or?
Yeah, we can provide a hard copy of this presentation.
Yes.
We can provide it to you this evening, I'll send it to you.
Okay, and you'll fix those little places that need to be fixed, and the updated leakage report will be in that, is that correct?
We can create a full, what we pulled was really a portion and tried to format it so that it looked correct on a presentation, but what I'll do is pull the entire updated report and provide that as well.
Thank you, that's, and I agree with Mr. Townsend, us hearing, you know, once a year, I want us to know every three to six months, so I will ask to make sure that staff gives us when they hear from you. Lastly, you said that there was a clothing, that clothing company, that in 30 to 60 days you would know something.
Sure.
I was thinking, that sounds like by September 1st, we might have an idea of what might be.
Well, that's, that's an estimate, again, you think about a broker for this brand represents the brand in all markets across North Carolina, so they are looking at sites across the entire state, those vacant former grocery stores or former clothing stores, they've got to go up to a real estate committee for that national brand. They've got limited time in their monthly agenda to look at every single site, so 30 to 60 days is a ballpark estimate, and it's not necessarily a hard deadline. What our team will do though, in that 30 to 60-day period, I mean, 60 days from now, we will likely see that broker in person at an event, we'll meet with them, we'll ask them about the site here in Albemarle and if the retailer's been able to review it. So ideally, we want to stay pleasantly persistent with the broker to drive information gathering and be the squeaky wheel that gets the grease.
In your work, just keep in mind, we'd sort of like to look a little bit like Mountain Brook.
Okay, sure, okay.
Got that.
Let's do it. Well, I think, you know, I don't live in Mountain Brook, my colleague does, and he, he's familiar. I think that downtown in Albemarle, and we've talked about this plenty with the city, a lot of large-scale developers are trying to replicate what already exists here in your historic downtown footprint. In a lot of ways, you already have all the ingredients in the pot, similar to like a Mountain Brook outside of Birmingham.
But Matt, just to follow with Mayor Pro Tem Hall, this past week I was headed up to Raleigh for, on a trip and riding Highway 64, and Toyota's putting a massive, as you probably have heard, it's putting a massive battery plant in up in Liberty, North Carolina.
Sure.
And, you know, I realize your specialty is retail operations, but man, if you hear anything in the, in the, in the woods about any kind of manufacturing opportunities, we would love to have that as well, that would, that would make your life and our lives much easier.
Absolutely.
Because we're going to hire about 2,100 people.
Yeah.
That plant's scheduled to open, I believe, in 2025, and it's a massive deal.
Yeah, yeah, and I think anytime you see some of those large-scale manufacturing projects come online, especially for a company like Toyota, it's a significant hook to hang your hat on. It means jobs, it means new families moving into the area, it means population growth, and those are all the things that drive new innovation and new development. So, yeah, anytime we hear about things like that, obviously we want to run it through Michael, and oftentimes the city and Michael and his team are extremely beneficial for us finding out about those things, so then we can relay that information to retailers. Again, 24 hours in a day, I will never be the same level of expert for the city of Albemarle as Michael and his staff are, so they've been a great partner to have in terms of providing us with up-to-date information on things like that, new neighborhood construction starts, which is a great triggering event for new retail development, all of those things are really, really important for us, and the city's always done a fabulous job keeping us up to date.
Counselor, have any more questions?
One last thing, I'd like to dovetail on to Mayor Pro Tem's comments about what we're doing, who we are, the lake, but if we take another step out going east, the URA National Forest is there, so is that being included in the demographics as you're talking to these people in terms of, and do you, would you even have an idea of exactly what the flow is?
Sure.
In a particular season?
Yeah.
And there's, there's four seasons that are up there between all the stuff that they have up there.
So the software and the way that we study the trade area, we can get pretty close to accurate DOT information in terms of traffic counts in and out of that area, and that tells a big story in terms of traffic count increasing, going towards a tourist destination like the state park. I think big picture though, it's similar to Pfeiffer University having operations in downtown in Albemarle, that's a different consumer profile, the college student, college educators, that's a different consumer profile, and it, having that diversity of consumer profiles is really important to attracting a really wide net of retailers. So another consumer profile is, you know, the people that are using their RV every weekend and going to the state park, or people that are driving through Albemarle to the state park. One of the things that's really fascinating about your Walmart here in Albemarle is that your annual estimated visits vastly outstrips the estimated number of visitors, I mean, multiples higher of individual visits, that means a lot of repeat visits, but it also means a lot of tourist visits typically, that's what that kind of indicates to us. So all of these things play a role in different recruiters that, different retailers that want to be near some sort of traffic for tourism, so all of that does play a role.
Matt, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you again for having us this evening, and Michael has got all of my contact information, so if any of you have a question at some point in the future, please reach out, he's got my phone number and email address, feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thanks, Matt.
Moving on to unannounced delegations, I have four people signed up to speak, but all of them are signing up for the same thing, so I'm going to call 8A, Review of Policy for Flotation Devices at City Pools, and ask staff to do their presentation before we start with the speakers.
Thank you. Did you leave a sample?
Good evening, Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak about our adaptive and inclusive flotation device policy at City of Albemarle Pools. I know there's been a lot of question and a lot of chatter out there, so just wanted to clarify some things. So as Albemarle Parks and Recreation and having to manage the pools, the pools are one of our, is, is our most risky thing that Parks and Rec does on a yearly basis. In fact, it probably goes right under police and firework, fire, what the work that they do. So just to let you know, our safety record at our pools is, so last year in 2022, we had about 8,000 people that came to our pools, and we also gave approximately 275 swim lessons during the summer, we had zero drownings, and we had zero times that we had to call or had to perform CPR. And to my knowledge, the history at our pools, we have never had a drowning, knock on wood. So our safety record stands. We also train our lifeguards in both first aid, CPR, and life-saving. We offer swim lessons, like I said, and swim lessons are the best thing for people to learn as far as their being safe in a body of water, especially a pool. And then, like I said, we train our lifeguards, they go through several hours of training, they have to be recertified every other year, they do training throughout their season here, they have to swim and do in services as well during the summer. So I gave you a copy of the policy, and our policy is that flotation devices are not allowed at the City of Albemarle Pools. The exception is that for individuals with disabilities, they can request an inclusion form for a US Coast Guard-approved flotation by, device. We then keep a list of individuals that fill out the form at each pool, and then they can request the flotation device. With the flotation device, the individual has to stay in the shallowest of ends and also have a caregiver or parent with them. So the purpose of the policy, like I stated before, we had, we, the City of Albemarle, Albemarle Parks and Recreation, we hold a lot of liability by opening two swimming pools every year, so I take that liability and those risks seriously. So with life jackets, you're assuming that every time someone puts on a life jacket, that life jacket is going to work, and so the life jacket or the personal flotation device is not a substitute for swimming lessons or parental watch in, in the pool. So the practicality of having to also allow personal flotation devices would be that we don't have enough staff to regulate that. I don't know if you know this, but lifeguards, their responsibility is to have a zone where they scan, so their counting, life jackets and their bulkiness can make the counts different or hard to see. And then the responsibility, it's a two-fold responsibility, one with our public and making sure that there, we are not serving as a daycare and we are serving as a public pool, and our lifeguards are our last, is anyone's last defense, and you don't want them to have to go in and save. So, thank you.
Please, a question for you.
Sure.
You know, I know we operate two pools within the city, on any given day, how many lifeguards are on duty?
We have two shifts, and there are five people per shift, per pool.
Okay. How long has this policy been, been in place?
I think since the beginning of our pools.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And is this something that most municipalities that operate pools implement?
Well, it's kind of hard to tell, it would be apples to oranges, you know, we had, and, you know, it's based on our population and our community, but, you know, all pools are different sizes, have different staffing, those type of things.
Another question for staff.
Just one last one, your comment about lifeguards. I know that at one point in time, lifeguards were hard to come by. Are we still having that right now?
Lifeguards, I mean, and they, and I, nationally are very hard. We are very fortunate to be fully staffed this year.
And fully staffed is how many?
Thirty.
And they are all part-time, they're actually just seasonal folks, most.
They're seasonal, yeah, they work between 30 and 40 hours a week.
And we do have, I'm at both pools, help me if I'm not, I might be wrong, but we have a manager or a?
We actually have two managers, one at each pool this year, and then each pool will have two assistant managers, and then there's head lifeguards if they're returning, and then your new lifeguards who are lifeguards.
I just know that lifeguards across the nation, particularly in North Carolina, there's just a dire need.
Still very hard to, to recruit and get, and get them to stay the whole summer.
Oh, yes.
And when the pool is open at Moro Mountain State Park, do they, do they allow flotation devices?
I'm not sure, they haven't been open since 2019, so.
Oh, have they not?
Mm-mm.
Okay. And the YMCA, I know, I'm not sure, I don't think, what is the Y do, do you know?
I really am not sure.
Okay.
I talked to a few municipal people, so I didn't talk to the Y.
Gotcha. Well, it's a whole different area when you think that.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a different, the Y is a nonprofit, and we're local government.
And we still offer swimming lessons during the summer, correct?
Yes, we do, and we have plenty open if you guys want to register for swim lessons out there.
I think, I think one of the, I want to commend you and your staff for, and, and staff, previous staff throughout the years, it's pretty remarkable, as long as those pools have been open, and thank God we haven't had any, any fatalities or any issues. I think one of the challenges when you start talking about flotation devices, I was in an outing a couple of weeks ago, and a three-year-old was, was there, and she jumped in the swimming pool because she forgot she didn't have her flotation device on, and, you know, that could have been a, a really horrific event. But, I think the, I think the, the facts that you've stated about, you know, if you have a, if you have a crowded pool and you have a lot of life jackets, things like that, it does make your lifeguards a little more, it makes it a, it makes it more of a challenge for them to, to hold, you know, make sure everybody's okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a question for staff? Okay, I'll start the unannounced delegations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. First one is Kim, and I hope I get this right, Stottsbury, 49428 River Run Road in Albemarle.
Good evening, Council. And I want to thank you for your dedication to the community of Albemarle. I want to especially thank all of you for your dedication of time and energy, it is greatly appreciated. My name is Kim Stottsbury, you did a nice job, thank you, Mayor. And I've been a real estate educator for over 30 years. I teach fair housing laws, and I teach Americans with Disabilities Act to real estate brokers and wannabe real estate brokers. And I'm here this evening to speak to you about something called disparate impact. Disparate impact is a doctrine or a policy or a practice that seems neutral on the face. On the face of it, it applies to everybody, so how can that be discriminatory? However, a disparate impact actually has the effect of disproportionately harming members of a protected class. And I believe the current policy prohibiting life jackets at the city pools in Albemarle creates a disparate impact, particularly on low-income families. And as we look at low-income families, I believe if we look at the demographics there, we will see many people with disabilities, a lot of senior citizens, and many people of color. And in addition to this low income and the demographics that would need to be considered, these people often are undereducated and less informed, less likely to have access to the internet to download a form. I would imagine there are parents of some of the low-income children that can't read the form or understand how to fill it out. I believe, I believe these are the people that need our pools the most. I think that's one reason there are public pools. The middle class and the upper-middle class have private pools. So, I'm here to speak for them, and I also am here to speak for my daughter, Amber Harley. She spoke at your meeting two weeks ago about her safety concerns over the current life jacket policy. Amber is a competitive swimmer, she's a strong swimmer, she's a trained lifeguard. I doubt she's certified now, but she was a lifeguard in high school. She has worked at pools and worked with children for years. She has three children of her own, and I would say she's an expert on water safety. She, she understands the danger, and she understands how important it is to keep your eyes on the children and the non-swimming adults. Last summer, Amber was at one of the pools in Albemarle, and she observed a grandmother with four children, four grandchildren come to the pool. Grandma was trying to take care of the kids, and I don't know if they had passes or if they just paid for the day, but the grandmother was really spread thin, trying to keep up with the four children, and at one point, one of the children began to struggle in the water, and Amber assisted the child, and all was well. Had the child been wearing a life jacket, the child probably wouldn't have needed any assistance. And this is not an isolated incident. Amber has stepped up to help people struggling in the water several times in the city pools and at the Y once, in just the last couple of years. Amber is currently not bringing her three children to play in the Albemarle City Pools because it only takes 30 seconds for a child to drown. Amber has three children of her own to keep an eye on in a pool. Two are young swimmers and pretty good at it, but they get tired sometimes, they have unreasonable expectations of their limitations, and her youngest is not a swimmer yet, and she is very concerned about him. He just turned four, and he is hopefully going to be swimming by the end of the summer. He's in swimming lessons, I think he started today. My daughter said to me just yesterday, "Mom, if I see a kid struggling in the water and I take my eyes off Walter for just a minute to help another child, I put Walter in danger." And she was really torn because how can she not help another child, and how can she risk her son? So, they're not coming to the Albemarle Pools, they're going to other pools where the flotation devices are allowed, and by flotation devices, I mean Coast Guard approved flotation devices that will keep a child or an adult upright, head out of the water should they have a Parents should be allowed to provide Coast Guard approved life jackets and puddle jumpers. Apparently, the Coast Guard approves those too. Those are the bathing suits with the little round thingies in them to keep the kids upright. And no child should be put at unnecessary risk in a public pool. The current no life jacket policy is unsafe, and I believe it's unreasonable, and the policy does create a disparate impact on people with special needs and people of color in this community. And once again, I'll reiterate, particularly the low-income families are less likely to have internet access to fill out the form, or even be able to fill out the form to get permission to use a life jacket. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Morgan Perez, 32062 NC 740 here in Albemarle.
Good evening. I am here tonight to speak about the no flotation device policy at Albemarle City Pools, Rock Creek and Chuck Morehead. I was told a few weeks ago by an employee of Albemarle Parks and Rec that life jackets would be available this summer at our city pools. I was very happy to learn this information. Recently, however, I learned that for a person to be able to use a life jacket at your pools, they must fill out an adaptive and inclusion form and wait several days to see whether it will be approved or not. This eliminates the possibility for a family to show up at the pool and enjoy the use of life jackets the same day. I filled out the form for my son. I was called and told that the form had been approved and that he would be allowed to use a life jacket at both pools, with stipulations that do not make sense to me. He's only allowed to wear a life jacket in the one-to-three-foot section of the pool. I must be in the pool within arm's reach of him while he is wearing the life jacket in the shallow end. If he wishes to go deeper than three feet, which is where he can't touch and would be at risk of drowning, he must remove his life jacket. I'm still struggling to understand the logic of this plan. Is Parks and Rec planning to approve all forms that are submitted? What are the reasons that a form may be denied? If the forms will be approved, why have the form at all? Why not have life jackets available at each pool for anyone that would like to use one and eliminate the form? The form is completely unnecessary. I have lived my whole life in Albemarle, I am proud to live here, I love and care about my community. The children and families in this community need to be able to visit our pools and utilize every layer of safety and protection available. Continuing to prohibit life jackets and puddle jumpers is outdated, careless, and dangerous. The past several summers, I have witnessed many families arrive at the pool expecting to have a fun experience, only to be told that the life jackets and puddle jumpers they brought to increase the safety of their children would not be allowed. I have also witnessed several rescues, none of which involved a lifeguard. The fact that even one family arrived at the pool and ultimately had to leave because of the no device, the no flotation device rule is simply unacceptable. How many other families choose to patronize other pools in the area, even though they have to travel further away, because they want to keep their children as safe as possible? For the last several days, I have taken the time to call many public pools in North Carolina. Every pool or Parks and Recreation Department that I spoke with allows the use of life jackets and puddle junker, puddle jumpers. Some even require the use of these devices for non-swim, for non-swimmers. I have not found one pool anywhere in North Carolina that does not allow life jackets and puddle jumpers. Albemarle City Pools may be the only pools in the state that restrict and prohibit the use of life jackets and puddle jumpers. And I'll stop here just to answer you, Moro Mountain does allow any flotation device. The Y allows life jackets and puddle jumpers. Parents do not always watch their children. Lifeguards do not always watch the people in the pool. A US Coast Guard approved flotation device can and will provide an extra layer of safety during those moments of inattentiveness and distraction. Please encourage, provide, and at the very least, allow life jackets at our city pools. The Red Cross recommends that small children and weak swimmers use a life jacket anytime they are near water, including pools and water parks. Please revise your pool policy to allow US Coast Guard approved flotation devices, which include life jackets and puddle jumpers. This policy revision needs to go into effect immediately so that our community can enjoy our pools safely this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Appears I may have two people from the same address that have signed up. Rachel Hoover and Penny Hoover, 2227 Woodhurst Lane.
A mom and daughter.
Okay, do one of you going to speak, or do both want to speak? Bring, bring your daughter up with you, that's fine. Okay.
And I can answer another question. The policy has been in place since 1990. We contacted the previous director of the Parks and Rec Department.
Speak into that mic for me, please. Thank you.
Is this better? Oh, my God, I'm loud, okay. So, we contacted the previous Parks and Rec Director, and he stated that this policy was put in place in 1990 because at the time, the Red Cross recommendations was against life jackets. I will remind everyone that smoking on airplanes was also considered safe in 1990. All right. Hello, my name is Rachel Hoover, and I'm here to talk about the ongoing situation concerning flotation devices at the Albemarle Public Pools. I would like to start with two things. First, an equivocation. When I say flotation devices, I am not referring to six-foot-tall unicorn boats or rafts or anything that is inflated using air. When I say flotation devices, I am specifically referring to Coast Guard approved aquatic safety devices otherwise known as life jackets, puddle jumpers, or PFTs. Secondly, I'd like you to know my end goal, which is free access to these flotation devices for everyone at all public pools in Albemarle, not just Moro Mountain, where there are currently no restrictions on flotation devices whatsoever. But I know changing policy is a marathon, so let's start with a story. Imagine for a moment, you go to the water park at Carowinds this year. Upon arriving, you find out that all flotation devices have been banned from the park. Shocked, you find an employee and ask them the reasoning for this decision, and they answer that life jackets are banned because they are only to be used in an emergency. You ask, "When does an emergency start? Is it when the child jumps in the pool or before? How is a life jacket supposed to help once the emergency is already happening?" But the employee ignores you because Carowind has, Carowinds has more reasons they want to share. The employee tells you that children's legs are not heavy enough to use a life jacket, and they're too floppy, and they can't figure out how to use them. They go on to say that using life jackets make children like them too much, and it encourages them to play in the water even when they aren't strong swimmers. This employee then gives you a wink, as if you're in on the joke, and says that parents only watch their children when they are in imminent danger, and so Carowinds decided that they would force these parents to pay attention by taking away flotation devices. Did that sound a little bit ridiculous? Well, all those reasons are taken directly from the Albemarle Pools flotation policy, which was released on their website on June 7th of this year. This document goes on to list the hardships that life jackets present to lifeguards. The first inconvenience is that lifeguards have no control over the type of jacket worn. Certainly, this is easily solvable by providing a quantity of pre-approved devices at each pool that are free for use. It also took me a matter of a moment to write up a specific definition of flotation device, and I can provide it to the Parks and Rec Department if they feel it would be difficult to write their own. The next stated reason is that people can fall out of life jackets. I, for one, would rather have a non-swimmer buckled into a life jacket that they might, in some exceptionally rare case, fall out of than have them in none at all. Do you know what's difficult for, do you know when it is difficult for a child to regain buoyancy? When they jump in the pool without a life jacket on. The third reason brings me back to the first. If you distract the lifeguard to inspect the life jacket, then have the devices pre-approved. It's easy to tell visually if a life jacket is improperly sized or improperly secured. In fact, the Coast Guard provides training concerning this, and it would benefit all of us who visit the pool to have lifeguards who have received full and comprehensive training. In fact, the Red Cross recommends that all small children and weak swimmers should have a life jacket on when in or near the water. I won't even address their fourth bullet point, since it references inflatables, and these are not the issue at hand. The fifth reason I find most interesting. I asked Darren Rhodes this question, but received no answer. Perhaps someone in this room can tell me. If, heaven forbid, a child is the victim of an accidental drowning at a public pool, is the parent of that child more likely to hold the city responsible because the child was allowed to wear a life jacket and it failed, or because they were not allowed to have one and the child drowned as a result? Certainly, if liability is a real concern, then the answer to that question is obvious. If the reason is related to insurance, I will note that the ADA also prohibits the creation of policies of exclusion deliberately intended to lower insurance premium costs. Let me tell you another story, and this one is true. I attended the pool last week and watched as a family with a disabled child arrived and were told he could not use a flotation device. This family and their three children still paid for entrance, perhaps hoping they could make it work anyway. Because they were denied a puddle jumper for their child, both parents had to be in the pool to hold his hand to ensure he didn't fall. the pool to hold his hand to ensure he didn't fall. Every scrap of their attention was absorbed by helping their disabled child enjoy the pool as much as his siblings, which meant that they could not spare a glance for their other two. As Albemarle Parks and Rec has an inclusion form, which at the time, they were not working to inform the public about, I spoke to them about it and went to the lifeguard station to request one for them to fill out so they would be able to use a life jacket. I was told that they don't have them there and won't have them there. I should note that this has since changed, and they are now available at the pool. But there is and was still a waiting period while this form is approved by Parks and Rec. Unfortunately for this family, they couldn't afford to wait for Lisa or Payne to make every effort to get to it today. They ultimately had to take their disabled child out of the pool. And forced him to sit out for the day. Occasionally, he would get up and dart to the water because, of course, he wanted to play in the pool with his brother and sister, just like any child would. Luckily, he was caught each time, but can you imagine what would have happened if he'd been a little bit faster? It takes less than 30 seconds for a child to drown. Drowning is the leading cause of death among children ages one to four, and the second-leading injury-related cause for those five to 14. Children with autism are 160 times more likely to dry by, die by drowning than their peers. Don't you think a life jacket, even an improperly fitted one, would buy a lifeguard or a parent precious seconds to save a life? This brings me to my final point, which is the inclusion form itself. This is a step, certainly, but it is the illusion of progress. My mother has had severe rheumatoid arthritis since she was 22 years old. I am continually amazed by her resilience and her unwillingness to accept that she cannot do everything she wants, regardless of physical difficulty, but there are days when she needs accommodation. Imagine my whole family arrived at the pool, and she was having a day where a life jacket would make the difference in her participation, only to be told that she, and only she, needs to stop and fill out this form so that someone in an office across town can decide whether or not she gets to be in the water with her family. Does that sound like inclusion or deliberate exclusion? Participation with restrictions is not equality. In fact, when I called the ADA helpline to discuss this issue, and I told them that our pools had a wheelchair lift but did not allow life jackets, the agent on the line laughed out loud. I performed a little bit of an experiment and had my mother fill out and submit the form. She was approved this morning, and she is allowed to be in the one-foot to one-and-a-half-foot section. My mother, who is in her 70s, will, will not be allowed in the four-foot section of the pool. Besides the fact that this is infantilizing individuals with disabilities at its very worst, it just leads to more questions that will require yet further regulation. The wheelchair lift is in the four-foot section. How will someone who needs to be able to use it, how will someone who needs to be able to use it, use it if they cannot wear a life jacket on that side? If they do allow one, why is that individual with a disability allowed to have one in that section, but my mother, who is also disabled, cannot? Do you see how these half-considered solutions are not real solutions, but instead just create more problems and administrative overhead? It's like Albemarle Parks and Rec is on a sinking ship, and instead of stepping to safely off onto shore with everyone else, they are writing rules to prohibit water from coming on the boat. In conclusion, I urge each of you to spend time on the U.S. Coast Guard website, the Red Cross website, and other water safety authorities. Every single one of these organizations, recommended access to life jackets is an easy way to encourage water safety. None of them mentioned any of the issues stated in the Albemarle flotation policy. Were a life jacket banned the norm among public pools, I could see the desire to continue this debate, but the vast majority of places that offer public swimming not only allow life jackets, but encourage and often provide them for use. My goal for Albemarle Public Pools is that they cease to be one of the minuscule minority of municipalities clinging to this policy, and that we rejoin the rest of the country in accepting that allowing Coast Guard-approved flotation devices makes pools monumentally safer and more inclusive. I am the mother of small children, who has experienced a moment where my child was able to slip away and jump in the pool on his own. I was there, and I saved him, but I think about what would have happened if I hadn't been there every time I visit a pool. If you ask any parent in this room, they probably have a similar story, or have an immediate family member who does. Statistically, there are parents in this room who have had or who have known a child who died in a pool-related accident that could have been prevented with a life jacket. Why is Parks and Rec insisting on clinging so tightly to an obviously flawed piece of policy? Why would they rather issue, issue a ridiculous flotation device policy document full of speculation and assumption, rather than craft a new, more common sense rule that will actually improve the safety of our pools? I find myself asking these questions to anyone who will listen, but no one will answer. Instead, I am sent links to the form or the policy document over and over until I specifically tell them to please stop using that as their answer. It is my mission to get this antiquated ban overturned in its entirety. From my perspective, I am saving lives, and I won't give up on that goal. A form is not enough. A posted sign about the form is not enough. I won't be going away until every child and adult who needs one can wear a lifesaving flotation device at the Albemarle Public Pools without having to fill out a form. Thank you for your time. I also have a little packet, which I didn't make one for everybody, sorry, but happily handed over here.
Give it to Rachel.
Okay, and what I included in here is I specifically referenced the policy. Sorry, I'm going to flip that. So I've annotated it, so you can see what specific sections I'm referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I also included the Red, the Red Cross, the National Drowning Awareness, and a whole bunch of other stuff in here for you.
Penny, you want to come up and speak?
Might need to turn it on.
See, I see how far the big one will let you pull it back.
Hi, I'm Penny. I believe that life jackets and puddle jumpers should not be banned because maybe someone somewhere was saved by a life jacket or puddle jumper at some point in their life. Let's start with a story. Say you and your kids go to Great Wolf Lodge. You go to get a life jacket for one of your kids because he's not a very strong swimmer. One of the lifeguards sees you getting a life jacket and says that all life jackets and puddle jumpers are not available because they are banned, and that they're going to take their, the life jacket stand down the next day. But you tell the lifeguard that one of your kids can't swim very well without a life jacket or puddle jumper, and that he loves to be with his sister. Lifeguard says that your son is going to have to stay in the kiddie pool for the rest of the day. This will keep him from playing with his sister. I have a little brother, and he isn't a very strong swimmer either. If he had a life jacket, we could play, play together in the deeper end of the pool. But since he can't have one, we can't play because it's not safe, even though he can swim. He's just weaker than me, and gets tired very easily. It would help him a lot to be able to wear a life jacket or puddle jumper. When my brother was little, we were at my neighbor's pool. Suddenly, he jumped into the pool when no one was in it. I had to rush over and save him from, from drowning because I was the closest to the pool. If he had been wearing a life jacket or puddle jumper, he would have been okay, no matter what. Luckily, I was there, and my grandmother was nearby. But everybody makes mistakes, and children can move really fast. That's why it's a good idea for anyone who can't swim or is a weak swimmer to be allowed to wear a life jacket or puddle jumper, because even if you don't think they're going to go in the water, they might surprise you. It's always safer to have a life jacket or puddle jumper when in or near any body of water, and Albemarle should let us have them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, that's the last of our speakers. Do you have any discussion? This is the first time that you have had an opportunity to see this policy. Do you have any discussion tonight?
I think it's something to think about. I just, like you say, I hadn't heard anything about this, so I, I don't know that I'd be prepared to make a decision or something.
I think counsel needs to take it into consideration and move forward as, as you see fit. I know they would like a decision as quick as possible, but counsel needs time to review the policy and make a decision on their own.
I have a couple of comments. As many of you know, I volunteer to teach swimming lessons at the YMCA and have for six, eight years. Spend a lot of time in the YMCA pool. I also serve on the State Child Fatality Task Force, representing all the cities and towns in North Carolina, and have done that for 14 years. This has been a issue that has been before the entire Child Fatality Task Force, and it has been before the Unintentional Death Subcommittee that I chair of the State Fatality Child, State Child Fatality Task Force. It's a very emotional issue, but we have got to, at all aspects and at all points, protect our children and protect all of those folks, whether they're children or adults who cannot swim or have problems swimming. I was oblivious as to what our policy said until tonight. Would dare not say that in 1990, I had a three-year-old taking swimming lessons at Rock Creek, and I probably don't even remember what was allowed or wasn't allowed in 1990. It was interesting to me that this policy that we currently have is been on, has been around that long. I do know that the Red Cross has changed things from, in the last 33 years. I would love to see what a, what is going on across the state and other municipalities. I'm just very, I think we are very blessed that we've not had a fatality or any type of problem at either of our pools, and I was amazed tonight here that we have 8,000 or so folks at our pools in the summer. However, with that said, there are municipalities in North Carolina that have not been that lucky, and there have been deaths, there have been lawsuits filed that risk management has had to pay because of drownings. On the other hand, the YMCA, you may have seen the Stanley News and Press, is the only pool in North Carolina at the YMCA or public or private pools that is currently using a device that they just started using last week, which is a neck device either used around the neck or around the head for all children, and they're using it now for their summer camp program, that if a child goes underwater, it sets off an alarm, and if the child stays over, under, any child stays under, whether they're wanting to be under or not, it goes off, and after so, so many seconds will set a number of alarms off. I think we've got to do whatever it is that keeps our children and those folks in our pools safe. Now, I'm not going to throw, I think our Parks and Recreation do a phenomenal job. They have taught over the years my children, my grandchildren to swim, but we have, whatever that policy is that we need to do to ensure that children are safe, we need to look at it. And I, I see, is this, where did that?
This, this, it was.
Is it in that packet?
In that packet.
Oh, my goodness, you did do some homework. Yes, you did do some homework. And, and there is a way to do, probably, you called every county, didn't you? There is a way probably to do a search with municipal and county pools to determine what is being used, probably through a, a listserv. I'm, I'm sure that can be done through the league and through the Association of County Commissioners, but I think we've got to do and, and take whatever steps it is to keep our children safe. What we think personally, and what we think safety-wise, may not be the same one, same ways. You know, I'm one of these that I want to make sure that children at, from the time that they are six months old, get in the pool and learn to swim, but not everybody is going to be able to do that. So I would encourage counsel to, to not jump too quickly, but we need to do something because today is June the 19th, and we'll lose some of those lifeguards about the first week of August when they go back to college. That's when we start having problems that, but I think we, we need to look at it. I think we need to compare it to what other folks are doing. We might need to run it by RMS and see what our, as much as I hate to look at the insurance or the liability part of it, but what is recommended through our insurance carrier. But it is, it's a very, it's an emotional issue, but beyond everything, it's a safety issue. And again, I'm not throwing Parks and Rec or anyone that works with them under the bus, because they are hands down, about six months out of the year, the highest outs, I mean, they are, and they are a department that folks come to all the time. I mean, different, I mean, right now, it's the pools, but a lot of people are in our pool, I mean, a lot of people are in our parks, and so I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that we've done our homework on. But again, we're two weeks, three weeks in, did the pools open on Memorial Day weekend? So we're three weeks into this year of, of service right now.
Yeah, thank you. Heard a couple of comments that you probably would want to get Ms. Burcher's opinion on at a later point also, before you make a decision.
If I may, again, Lisa, thank you for what you folks do. We, we live in an imperfect world, first and foremost. Rules and regulations are there for reasons. However, inclusive versus exclusive is something I think that we ought to look at. We have a pool, all of our grandchildren that swim either have life jackets or little things that go around their arms, that may not be the best thing, but we hadn't lost one, and we're not. But I think it would be in disregard not to investigate and make some phone calls to satisfy your own ideas of how the information was gathered to put this together. I'm not really a big advocate of having to fill out a form to swim or not to swim. The parks are there for our people and our people to use. Let's not put rules and regulations out there that make it impossible, or, that's not the right word, but makes it a point of frustration to not enter into the pool. We've got to be more open, as long as we do our homework to find out what's there, and I, I think that's where we need to go to address the concerns of the folks who took their time to be here tonight. And again, I really appreciate what you do. There's not a lot of things that I say that we're wrong on, but there are things that we probably just need to readdress.
Any further comments?
Your Honor, I'll just add, I just want to say thank you to the, to the folks who have obviously done your due diligence and done your homework, and this is, you know, this is the second meeting where we've had members of the community that are really passionate about a specific topic. And I said at last meeting, at the conclusion of our last city council meeting, is, listen, if we don't have people come to this chamber and, and speak in their piece and speak in their mind and showing us this type of information, we're just up here making decisions. You know, we're just up here, we don't know what the, what the, the voice of the people necessarily is, so I will, I will agree with the comments that have been made. We definitely need to look at this thing. I don't think it needs to happen tonight. We need a little time to, to do some research and to make some phone calls, but, you know, it's obvious that you're super passionate about what you, what you're, what you presented to us tonight. Getting the, the young lady involved is a, is a great thing. Thank you so much for, for that great little speech, and we will definitely look forward to addressing this topic further. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I would like to see something done at the next meeting. I think there's a, a short summer for the school kids this year, I think school's starting a little bit sooner, and so if we don't do something the next meeting, we're, I just don't want to see this thing get pushed off until summer's over with.
And I think we meet again on June 19th. And I think we meet again on, July the 10th. Is that right?
That's our next meeting, July 10th.
Yeah.
And I guess the last comment I'll say is, is that I am a bit, I'm happy that it's been brought forward because I didn't know. I mean, I, I didn't know what the policy was because that's not something that we would regularly know or see. So we know about it, we've heard about it, and we've seen it now in writing. And again, this was, you know, the first time we've heard or seen it was in writing. What we have at our, at the pools was tonight. Thank you for everyone's interest and, and information passed to us.
Thank you very much for coming. Moving on, administrative boards, 8B, Alamo Business Center construction progress update. Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, construction and progress is continuing on the development of Alamo Business Center. Approximately two-thirds of fine grading for the site has been completed at the time of the drafting of this agenda by the contractor, NGR Group. Waterline connection to the existing waterline in the park that's connected to the existing waterline on Hudson Street is now complete. All the sewer line has been installed and tested. Pond on the site has now been drained, and the stream restoration is in progress. That's an area where the pond was created when we did not own the property, and the stream diverted into a pond. And so we're returning it to its natural, natural condition. The first section of paving is still scheduled for June, and the NGR Group still anticipates making the connection on the USF 52 side of the property within the next few weeks. Shifting gears somewhat to the Golden Leaf Grant, the report update to the Golden Leaf Foundation, I submitted that earlier today, advising them as part of our grant requirements, where we stand on that project. We did open bids, or we did advertise bids for the site-ready construction of the 15-acre pad. We did not get sufficient number of bids to open. So that project has now been re-advertised, and bids are scheduled to be opened and received on June 30th. And at that time, if we do not receive three, we are permitted by state law to go ahead and accept and open what we did move forward with and accept, except or deny any proposals received at that time. So hopefully, by the July 10th meeting, we should have an approval for your consideration of the low bid for the site-ready project at the Alamo Business Center. And that's my update on the project, Mayor.
Anyone have a question? Mark.
Yes, and it's basically in the departmental reports, but it, back on the bid. So they opened on June 15th, and that we didn't get enough, is that right?
That's correct.
Because that was what was in Lindsey's report.
Okay.
So they opened on June 15th, they did, we didn't get enough, so it's going back again.
And those, those we receive, if you don't have three, just do not open what you've received.
Right.
And you re-advertize. At that point, whatever we get, we can move forward with.
So when she put in hers, bids will be open June 15th, they probably were not then, is that correct?
That was prob, that could have been at the original, at the time she wrote that, that bid opening was scheduled, anticipating we'd receive bids, and it, we did not get enough. So the process went forward, but we had to halt opening because we didn't receive three.
Okay.
Moving on to 8C, departmental monthly reports are in your agenda.
And I do have a couple of those, if anybody has theirs and you want to follow with them, just a couple of questions. Okay, Second Street Alleyway, where is the Second Street Alleyway?
I don't know what somebody's calling the Second Street Alleyway, but it may be the alley between the Carpieno property and the Sweet Chop new property.
Okay. I just, it was in the report, it was in Lindsey's report, and I, okay, I just, if you didn't know, and Lindsey, so, okay, just questioning that because I didn't know where that was either.
That's most likely what she's referring to.
We probably need to get, make sure everybody's on the same page on that, if that's what she's referring to. Because we, I didn't know. And I saw that there was a homeless camp that had to be moved from down at Market Station on May 12th. Do you know of any more that have had to be moved off of the DOT, off the DOT property off of West Main? Have you heard any about that?
Not that I've heard.
No, I've not heard anything additional.
Okay. Going on over to, back to HR, we have, and I'm, it's on the, it's on, I guess, the last page of the HR one. Looks like we've had 132 journal entries from the performance appraisal, and I think we have 277 full-time employees. So that looks like we've not gotten quite everybody got, has had anything done yet. And our, and our raise is going in, to be implemented in, let's see, in Ju, in July. And I think if you look on here, under number two, it says, "The leadership team agreed for performance evaluations to be done." I think it's supposed to be 9123. It says 91203 with recommended merit pay effective 917. So if we're, if we have 132 of 277 folks who have got some journal entry of a performance appraisal, we're still not quite there yet. It doesn't look like even for half of those folks. And I may be reading this incorrectly, and this is May's report, so I may be not seeing it all completely. Question that I do have, following up is, is that we do have an RFP out for Health and Wellness Clinic. And I guess, as I was going into the Y today, I wondered if we still are paying, you might as well come on up, if we're still paying for folks' membership, or partial, not complete membership, but partial membership to some gyms?
Yes.
And if this Health and Wellness is going to take place on that? And how we're, how we're policing that? Because I know that we've not policed it in the last couple of years.
Right. So we are still paying gym memberships, the partial payment for both Gold's Gym and for the YMCA, and we do that on a monthly basis and check the visits.
We do check visits?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good.
Yes. And with the RFP, we have developed the RFP, we have not submitted that to vendors as yet, because we've just got an agreement recently on a possible location, and we want to update the RFP with that.
So will that take the place of gym membership for folks?
Most likely not, because our intention with the Wellness Center was for it to be, you know, a primary care office, right? And that was truly the focus of it. However, if we do have additional space, we could consider that. But with our RFP, as it's been drafted at this time, no, that is not.
Very good.
In the RFP.
Very good.
And then you referenced that we've gotten 132, okay. So yes, we've gotten, some of our supervisors has fully embraced the system and have created multiple journal entries, but at this time, we don't have a journal entry for every employee. However, I've got some supervisors that have already completed their appraisals. But following our approval of the budget this evening, we do plan to do additional training throughout the summer for all supervisory staff, to give them comfort levels on completing those appraisals. We'll also be doing training for employees as well.
And again, I would say, not, not in a definitive measure, this is something, if we're going to implement it, our department heads need to do it.
Right.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're doing a merit and we're putting some money in there, then by golly, they need to realize the importance of doing them. And it's not something.
It's not optional.
No.
And our, our department heads realize that, and we had good discussion at our last leadership team meeting, and that's why we agreed on the date of having the appraisals fully completed by September 1st, and then the merit would not be payable into the period that I referenced in my monthly report.
That's the next week?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's.
It's doable, because I've already seen some of them, they're really surprising me of some of the good comments they're putting in there. We just have to do additional training and give them the comfort level with the system.
Okay. Thank you. The next question I have on the reports would be on the information systems. We didn't have one last month in April, so this one probably should be for May, April, and May. Just wondering if anybody's reading them, because on page two of this one, it references May, and then it references October. The bottom section includes the completed tickets for October. So I was wondering, where is that coming from? Because I get, I get, I got completely lost in here. If this is a May report, then why do we have October mentioned? That's the bad part of me getting a paper copy of all this, guys, is that I pay attention and write all this stuff down. There may be one more. Hold on one second. That's it.
Moving on to number nine, the consent agenda, Resolution 2313, water and sewer rate adjustment, Resolution 2314, electric rate adjustment, Resolution 2315, salary schedule adjustment, Resolution 2316, public-private parking agreement. E is considered road closure for Forest Hills neighborhood July 4th parade, and F is considered road closure for the Mount Zion Baptist Church Vacation Bible School block party. I need to pull D because we have a conflict for two of our council members. So can I get a motion for A, B, C, E, and F, and to pull D and discuss it separately? So moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I need to entertain a motion that we excuse Councilmembers Bramlett and Hall from Resolution 2316, public-private parking agreement.
We'll, we'll need Councilmember Aldrich back in here, won't we, to have a quorum?
You will. And I, just a point of, a point of, just a point of privilege, the motion that was just made, was that to pull 16 and to approve A, B, C, E, and F, or was it just to pull D?
That was the problem.
Problem of it.
Was it to pull it and to, okay, so.
As he presented it.
Okay, I just, I, I didn't understand it. I thought it was just to pull it, but not to approve the rest. I would then vote, never mind, I'll leave it like, I'll leave it like it is.
Let's go back. Resolution 2316, public-private parking agreement, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Bramlett and Councilmember Hall.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now I would entertain a motion that we approve Resolution 2316, public-private parking agreement.
Something off white.
Oh, hell, come on, Chris. Put on your track shoes, bud.
Obviously, he's not voting, it doesn't really matter. All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Do you tell them to step back in?
Do we need to elaborate as to why they was excused for the general public?
Cut. They were, they were excused for a conflict of interest. budget. At the last meeting, council asked that we continue that to this meeting for possible further discussion. Does anyone have any further discussion on the 2324 budget?
I do have some. Thank you. In the, in the item agenda cover sheet, there were some comments made about, that I made, some comments of some, questions that I had last month or last meeting. And I just would go back to say, so it's on public record that I am not against the Parks and Recreation study, not against it particularly, because the last one that we have was now done 15, 14 years ago, as a part of the county Parks and Rec. I do want us to be mindful that we, as the comment that I made a few moments ago, our Parks and Rec, our Parks and Recreation staff and department, our Parks particularly, are getting more and more and more folks there. Between now and the time that we meet again in, you know, three weeks, there will be eight more home games of the Wampus Cats, and I have probably attended, if there have been 10, I've probably been to eight of them already. I have people all the ti, I mean, every game, come to me and say, "This is great, we're so thrilled to have this here." And these are people from Alamo, from Stanley County, and from outside the county. This is a great facility, but we need, you need, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh." And a lot of that is bathroom facilities at both, and the upkeep of them and that kind of thing. Again, that's not anything derogatory against our staff, it's just that we know that there's an issue. We knew in February or March that we were going to have the capacity down there. It needs to be studied, but if we've got an issue and we know people are there now, and this is being, someone with, with Wampus Cats just on Saturday night said to me, "This is definitely an economic development tool that we have here, because it's bringing people in." So I'm not against a study. I really know that we've got some immediate needs and immediate issues that we need to really put some money in, and it's always been cut, cut, cut. We might not have the money to do it, guys, we need to do that. One of the things that I guess I'm really most concerned about with this particular budget is the use of, I think Mr. Bramlett, or Dr. Bramlett, has asked about it to begin with, while we were using parts of our, of our fund balance. We are balancing a budget with fund balance for some issues. Guys, we're continuing to, you know, we've still got that $5 million of ARPA money there. We shouldn't have to be borrowing any fund balance to do things right now. We ought to be able to maneuver and to use that money into that way, so we wouldn't have to use our fund balance. We are about to embark on a year that the local government commission is going to be holding our feet, not just Alamo, but local governments across the state, feet to the fire about where our fund balances are percentage-wise. We had 30, almost 32% last year, and we won't know what, where we are until the audit comes in, in October, from where we are this year. But those were my comments as a result of the agenda cover sheet that I, that I wanted back on to be able to make in public. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Boston approval ordinance 23-22.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, approval ordinance 23-22. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Item B, 10B, Resolution 2312, to join and incorporate the Yakin PD Water Management Group. We had this discussion last meeting, and our utilities director made that presentation, and we have that for us tonight, whether to approve it and move forward.
I would make a motion to, and respect, be respectful of Jay, and be respectful that this is the second time we've had it on the agenda. We had it on the agenda and had some discussion last month or last meeting, and we said that we would let Jay know if there were specific questions that we had moving forward for us to sign this and to go on record being a part of this. I have reached out to some folks that, where I had some concerns based on, based on prior water issues that we were involved in. I have not gotten back my answers from those folks. I do see that part of this resolution was to do it, and the hopes were to sign things by June 30th. I would ask that we approve it and join it with the condition that I have just a little bit of time, probably by the end of the week, to hear from the folks that I have asked about. I'm still very concerned. Jay, again, this is not you or your department. This is, we're talking about, this is the watershed that we are a part of. And we've got, we've got folks that are members of this who are not part of our watershed. And I want to make sure that we're not releasing any rights that we have. So I would either ask that we table it one more time until July 10th, or we approve it and not sign it until 1st of next week, by Monday or so, and, and you all give, I mean, if I, if I hear something that really concerns me that we put it, that we put a hold to it, I don't want to hold you all up on June 30th, but I want to get an answer from a certain person on this.
Again, what was the stipulation, bud, uh, bring about, what was the stipulation to be signed by June the 30th?
So that is the formal inauguration of this group. They're trying to get transferred over before the end of their year under a new management name to go non-profit. So that, that's basically the deadline of the group for everyone to get involved to, to join the group. And it is fiscally.
I think Jay has done some research to answer some of the questions that were asked at the last meeting. And it does have some comments to make. It may answer everybody's questions. It may lead to more questions. There may be still some unanswered questions. But, but Jay has some information that he's prepared to share this evening.
Sure, thank you. So I, I sensed two primary concerns at the June 5th discussion. Plan to address both of those tonight. One of the, one of the concerns I sensed was the eligibility of membership. So there was some talk about why some, some entities are a part of this group. Basically, in the bylaws of the new nonprofit group, it basically stipulates how members would be eligible to join the group and have a voting decision as a part of the group. Uh, it very clearly states in there that group membership will include only entities that are eligible to be members. Any governmental entity, public water utility, or reservoir operator that provides a water-related service within or by using the water resources of the Yadkin PD River Basin may join the group. So there were a number of entities that, you know, geographically don't make, uh, complete sense, uh, being on that list. But if you actually look at their interconnections and what they have with other, other, uh, government agencies, they actually receive benefits of the basin. Uh, just to name one specifically, Statesville, I'd heard that was brought up at the last meeting. Uh, they are interconnected with Salisbury Row and Utilities, who pulls from the Yadkin PD Basin. So everyone who would join the group has to receive some resources from the basin itself. They can't just freely join the group. There are same stipulations for the Catawba Watery River Basin, who has a same nonprofit structure of group. You see some of those same entities that are kind of in between the Catawba and the Yadkin are actually a part of both of those groups. So they're, they're able to join both if they receive resources from the basin. So I just wanted to make that clear, that you actually have to receive resources from the Yadkin PD Basin to join the group. The other, uh, concern that I sensed was the overall authority of the group and what decisions they are able to make for the members. Basically, the purpose of this group is to, is to talk about regionalization of water supply and also the health and, uh, and condition of our basin itself. So things that we discuss in there are the levels of the basin, uh, what we do in terms of drought response in case that there was a drought, how do we manage the levels of, of each of the basins in the Yadkin PD so that entities can either pull or restrict pull from. There's no decision made inside this group that is going to prevent an agency from, uh, drawing down on their pool. But overall, uh, guidance on how to manage that pull from the basin. Uh, any entity that has plans for expansion along the basin, any entity, uh, that is along the basin that has its plans, that group is not there to prevent or even further the position of that group from any further expansion plans. Basically, it, it just, they like to incorporate your expansion plans if you do have plans to expand in, in terms of their planning and ability to serve from the basin. Uh, but they're not there to approve or deny any entity's plans to expand if anyone did have plans. Those, those were the two primary concerns that I sensed. So that's what I sought out at the June 5th, uh, or I'm sorry, the June 8th Yadkin PD Water Management Group meeting. I talked to some counterparts in that meeting, and they assured me of, of those concerns that that's, you know, their authority is just the authority of the actions of the group itself to conduct plans and conduct sustainability efforts for the entire basin. Not necessarily individual entities, uh, needs or expansion needs at the, at the individual level. And also the eligibility of members in the group, that it can't just be anyone and everyone. It has to be someone that receives benefits from the Yadkin PD Basin, whether they directly withdraw from the basin or whether they receive it from another entity that withdraws from the basin. So I hope that somewhat answers some of the concerns that, that council had from the last meeting. Um, I personally, I do recommend going ahead and making the action to join the group. Uh, I, I think that it would be, uh, somewhat irresponsible to not join the group, considering that they are doing planning efforts for the, for the Yadkin PD Basin. And considering that we are one supplier that has two withdrawal points along the basin, we would want to have a voice inside that group. Uh, this group is going to exist whether or not we decide to join into it. So I feel that it would be a responsible move to go ahead and join the group and, and continue their sustainability efforts. And if there are any more questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them. Like, like I said, I would, I would be hopeful that this is approved tonight so that we could go ahead and move forward with it.
Yeah, I guess, more than that, the memorandum of understanding that was part of the, since 2016, and understand that with what they're trying to do is make it more concise. Somewhere I read that, that, that memorandum of understanding has evaporated. As it not is no longer in, in operation or how we're doing things.
Until June 30th. We are still operating under the MOU right now until they make that transition to the nonprofit.
Okay, it was the initial memorandum of understanding from the, uh, WNG expired in 2021. Okay, I understand what you're saying, but it, some of this stuff, as you read it, it, it doesn't make a whole, and I think, it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense the way that it's written. I think you could take 72 pages, I mean, hellfire, um, and get it down to something that's legit, reasonable, understandable, that we could give it to somebody out in the audience, they could say, okay, yeah, I understand what's there. Really, I think it should have been sent to our attorney and said, you know, here's what we, here's what it is, here's where we are. But regardless of that now, I, I think we're under the gun to make a decision this evening, so.
It, it certainly could be more concise, and, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was, I was hoping the memo that I provided to, to council would help kind of bring that 72 pages down to maybe one or two. But the, the, the bylaws were vetted by several attorneys. And the way that this group was operating under the MOU was a little bit messy. They had one city actually taking care of the finances of the group, which, if you ask anyone to finance, it's probably not the, the most appropriate thing to do for several entities that are joined into a group. Uh, so this is one method of, of separating that, get the finances under a nonprofit as opposed to being managed by one city, uh, and to basically formalize the approach of the group.
And Ms. Burks, did you have any comments about what Mr. Dry just asked?
So I was not a part of the original drafting of the agreement, but typically when these consortium-type arrangements come together, there's feedback from a lot of experienced, um, legal experts as well as technical experts, um, in the public utilities field. So I will defer to Jay if he's comfortable entering into the agreement, then I don't have any further comments to add.
Further questions, comments?
Euphemism means to use a more pleasant word when you really want to use a real harsh one. I'd love to be able to use conspiracy or scheme or whatever, but instead I'll just use the word plan. What I see here is an overall organization that will eventually take over the allocation of water from, from the Yadkin PD. That's what I mean by plan, conspiracy, whatever. I did not know that Charlotte took water from the Yad, from the Yadkin PD, but they're a member here. What I see there, and, and the three people who are the incorporators of this, one lives in Monroe, one in Salisbury, and one in Raleigh. Two of the three incorporators are not even anywhere, on the Yadkin PD. So that further supports what I'm saying about a scheme or plan to take over the allocation of water, which then would, we would then lose the very privileged situation we now have in, 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 in the water that flows by, uh, Stanley County. The, the allocation of that water will eventually be taken over by people from Statesville, Charlotte, Kannapolis, that sort of thing. There is, and, and I want everyone in this room to hear what I just said because someday you're going to come back, and that's exactly what you're going to find, and we'll lose that. There's no way I could support joining an organization that will eventually do that.
To, to your, I think that's a great point. But if we don't join, these people do, where are we then? If we're not involved with the, the daily aspects of this, and we're, we've excluded ourselves, are we putting ourselves more in jeopardy?
If we didn't join the group, we wouldn't have a vote.
So that means they, if they wanted to do something, we're sitting on the sideline and have nothing to say about it at that point.
So if I may, um, and again, it is a catch 22, and that's the reason I'm so apprehensive about it. I know that we've been a part of it, and this, and I read your memo that you sent, I mean, I read all of that, what you had given us and the agenda cover sheet plus the memo that you wrote. So I mean, I was, I knew that was there. But I look back on Dr. Bramlett's comment just then, and I look at folks who have direct access of this list of members, those folks who have direct access and an allocation of water. And water is, I want our greatest commodity, guys. I mean, it literally is. It's, and I look at the list of people there who have direct access, not secondary or third. And you start up at Wilkes-Barre, and you might get some of Yadkin County in there. That's where all this starts. And if you look at that list, half of them, I dare not say half of them, don't have a point where they get direct access. And I guess I'm just a little, I guess I go back because of the history. And maybe it's sometimes knowing a little bit of that history of what we went through over the years, 10 or 15 or 20 years ago, it just gives me, it just really concerns me. So those are, that's my concern. And I know if we're not there on this train, the train's going to leave whether we sign it or, or not. Okay, this train is going to leave. However, I want to make sure that if we sign it and become an official member of it, and that that memorandum of understanding goes away on June 30th, and we've established a nonprofit organization that we have signed on the dotted line of being a member of, I want to make sure that it's beneficial for us. Because I probably won't be around when this really, I mean, whenever, probably none of us up here will be around whenever this really hits, okay?
David will, he's the youngest.
David will, David and, so, you know, I, I still, I still would like another set of eyes that I have passed it to that have not gotten back to me, who knows the history of some things, to just say, yeah, I think we need to, or, you know. I would, now, this is when I wish Jack Neal were around, guys, because he really knows, knew the history of all the water. And this, again, it's nothing against Jay. Those, those are my concerns, so, and I may hear from this person by the end of the week. But that's, that will, this person's input to me will help me individually know if I, if I can support it.
And if it, if it helps, uh, calm any concerns of council, we have the ability, and it's set forth in the bylaws, that we can disband ourselves from the group at any given time with no penalty.
I, I saw that too.
And what you're, what you're acting on tonight, if you choose to do so, is making me a member representative for the group. Obviously, I, I'm enacted through the wishes of the city manager, who's enacting through the wishes of, of you all. So if council sees fit to retract themselves from the group at a later date, we can certainly do that.
Counsel, you have a motion?
I am happy to pass any information that I get on. And I would be so bold as to say that we sign it next week. But this is just, it would, that, it's only my vote on what my, what the person that I really want to talk to, to look at this, says, just because they have some history. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't, I don't want us to be the only one that's not there on June 30th. But, you know, there are six others on here that have a vote.
Is that a motion that we sign it next week? Is that a motion for you?
I, I will let somebody else make that because y'all know where I am with it. I mean, it, but I hear that we need to, I'm just not ready to do it right now. But I don't want to be the holdup that doesn't get in there before the June 30th and us not be on the bus. But I mean, I'm hearing some spec, I'm, um, some holdback on a lot of people.
Well, if we do that, and you, if you don't hear by the end of the week, then we need to kick somebody in the butt and get them moving forward a little quicker. If we do that, have that, would it be agreeable to just be able to come up here the Monday afternoon or, which would be the 26th, uh, to, to sign it? Or do we have to have a formal meeting to do so?
You either get, make a motion to agree to sign it, or you, or you don't. I mean, you can't, if you want to have another meeting, that's totally up to you.
Okay. If we don't sign it, it might put a shockwave through these other units, these other units that are on the river, and they might understand really what's at work here.
Is there any real difference between the memorandum of understanding and this agreement other than making this a nonprofit?
Not to answer you facetiously, but, but there is a set of bylaws to be abided by of the group that would be incorporated as part of the nonprofit. And all the bylaws pretty much state, in, in my review and as well as our view of it, is that it sets a standard for how things get voted on, uh, what takes a majority, a supermajority, how to be eligible for membership, uh, what to do, uh, what some of the purposes of the group are there for. That's pretty much what the bylaws state. It, it basically brings decorum and manner and process to the nature of the meetings.
Is that the same basically unstated policy or procedures that, to your knowledge, that this has been working on through the MOA?
Yes, ma'am, and we're, as we currently are under the MOU, uh, we conduct the meetings in the same manner. Mr. Henson has also attended some of those meetings in the past before. Uh, I think that he would go as far as agreeing with me. I, I personally don't see much change, uh, in, in going from the MOU to the, to the nonprofit. Um, I would, I would hate to be a bystander sitting on the sidelines of other decisions that are being made in the group that, I mean, we are a direct withdrawer from the PD basin. So I, I, I think it would be difficult for us to, to sit here and not be a part of that. And especially if there are resources available to help advance Albemarle's position and what we are trying to do on the chain, and not say, I abide for an, an entity that may be indirectly withdrawing from the chain, uh, to make decisions on our behalf. I, I really hesitate to put ourselves in that position, but it, it is council's desire.
So basically, so at the end of the day, if we don't join, we're at the mercy of the decisions were made by the people who are members. Is that what you're saying?
Of what occurs inside the group. I don't want to make it seem that they're making decisions on Albemarle's behalf and figure on what we do as an organization, on, on how we plan to use our infrastructure. Uh, but they will be making, uh, plans and efforts for sustainability along the Yadkin PD chain. As previously stated, drought response, uh, levels of the chain, uh, what the use of the chain is in the future in terms of, um, Duke's position in the chain, which they have a very strong position in on the Catawba Watery. So it's, it's just total regional efforts to plan for sustainability.
You're making my case there. You're making my case there.
The group.
Bylaws can change. We're talking about bylaws as they exist now. If we join, we will be 1/18th of, of the voting power in the, in the. power in the, in the organization.
There, there have been six entities that have officially joined thus far. The remainder are waiting for council meetings to, to get approval from their council. So I don't have an updated number as of yet, but.
Who are the six?
I can't off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. It would be interesting to know if they were direct, if they were direct allocates or second, I mean, you know, there are people right now, I mean, when Norwood gets through taking the water out, that they're going to be taking out of Lake Tillery at the southern end, to send to Monroe, to send to Waxaw.
I, I can say for a fact that Union County has, they are a direct withdrawer. Salisbury-Rouan has, and they are a direct withdrawer from High Rock Lake.
From, right.
And I, I can't remember off the top of my head what, who the other four are.
They would also make recommendations when agencies or cities were trying to obtain grants. They would be supportive of those grants. Is that the way I read some of this?
It would be the group applying for, for grants and administering grants. It wouldn't be like if we wanted to apply for a grant on our behalf that they would have any decision in whether we apply for it or we don't. We can do that on our.
But they could be supportive of it.
They very, they very well could be.
And also, again, I'll ask what you want to do. Last call.
Oh, hello. Move to approve Resolution 2312, just to see where it goes.
Have a motion by council member dry to approve Resolution 2312. Do I have a second? Last call. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by council member Aldridge. Further discussion?
I would, I would make a substitute motion. Thank you for doing that one. I would make a substitute motion that would say, that would read, we hold off on the passing of it until Monday, June 26th, at which time we will have a motion and we can, I mean, it, it can take two minutes to do it. We can make a time to come in to do it, but I just think we hold off on it. And, and I don't know if that would change. I don't know if, if one vote is going to change it.
So are you saying a separate meeting on Monday, the 26th?
Us coming together, at least, or a majority of us, to be able, because I can't, I cannot support it right now until I feel completely comfortable. And again, this is not anything against Jay. It's just history. And I don't, I just need to feel comfortable with it. And it may be that it would, you know, that's my substitute motion, that we don't do it tonight, that we do it on the 26th. And I, and it doesn't have to be the 26th. It could be if there's another day that's better, that, that we can all be here or, I mean, because we have to be here. And again, or I, or I don't even have to have a second on that substitute. We know what happens if we, if something fails and we bring it back up. We know how we can do that.
Do you need a second to your motion?
Hang on one second. I want to see if I, we got any conflicts on the 26th.
Well, and it doesn't have to be that, we do need a second on the substitute, but it doesn't have to be the 26th. If we could.
I don't see us having any conflict. So I have a motion to, a substitute motion to have a meeting on the 26th to consider this. So I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by council member, have a motion by council member Hall, second by council member Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor of meeting on the 26th to finalize this agreement in support or deny? Say aye.
Did you, we don't have a time on there though, Ron.
We'll do that when we adjourn.
Okay.
Can I have a call of hands or something? I need to know who.
All in favor of the motion to meet on the 26th. It's four, all opposed. Four, two. We will have a meeting on the 26th and we'll decide at the end of the agenda tonight of what time to adjourn to.
I'm sorry, guys, but I, and I'm sorry, Jay. I feel like, I feel better about it.
Moving on to new business special use permit 2301, proposed compartmentalized storage in a general highway business district mall site. Staff, I will ask you to introduce. This is a special use permit. Who'd I have planning to speak? If you do, I need to come up and have, have you sworn? The staff and Mr. Mason, the only two planning on speaking for or against. You got a Bible there? Left hand on Bible, raise your right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give be truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, help you God? Okay, staff, if you'll introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you, council. Staff analysis here. So this is our application here, a special use permit 23-01. Everything was signed off on by the applicant and staff. Our applicant is DILS Properties LLC, under care of Dusty Mason, who is the property owner. The address for this site is 814 NC Highway 2427 Bypass East, Almarl, and its tax record 33360. And this is for a special use permit under 92.102 GHBD, General Highway Business District, subsection C, which is special uses permitted upon approval of city council for number four, which is in individual compartmentalized controlled storage units. And I'll come back to some of that potentially here. This is our site right here, highlighted in blue, and the pink area is the GHBD zoning. This is our aerial. Most people familiar here with the old mall, the, the belt being located there and next to Lowe's as well. So section 92.141E is the standards for decisions. There are five here. I will go through them. So before a request for a special use permit is granted, city council must show that all of the following are met. A, the use will not, will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. Applicant stated the proposed storage business will in no way endanger the public health or safety. Staff comment, we believe that the compartmentalized storage units will not endanger the public health or safety based on the units being located within the existing structure as shown on the submitted site plan. Let me flip to that there. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. What you have here in the center where my mouse is at would be inside of the current existing structure. That would be where the compartmentalized storage units would be individual. There is a point of access here to the north where my mouth is, mouse is at the top of the page. And here at the bottom, there's another access point the applicant can explain further. B, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The applicant statement says that they'll meet all the conditions and specifications for offering a first-class indoor climate-controlled storage operation. Staff comment was, staff believes the indoor climate-controlled secure facility meets the intent of the fencing requirement, which is in that subsection C, a part of compartmentalized storage units by making the units accessible only through controlled access entrances located on the building. The applicant will not have storage units individually accessible from the outside of the existing structure. This is, that would be a typical compartmentalized storage unit place, is what you'd think there. In addition, staff feels that no businesses will be conducted within any individual unit and the indoor compartmentalized storage business will be completely separated by walls from other businesses on the property. Part C, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity. The applicant stated that this would continue, would bring continued enhancement of the property. This site was a former mall. 65% of the entire shopping center has been vacant for 10 or 10-plus years. Portions of the old mall have been vacant for 25-plus years. This old large malls that sit vacant, especially in smaller towns, often become very dilapidated and eyesores. In this commercial environment, old, large mall space is very hard to achieve maximum occupancy level due to the cost of renovations in those areas as well as limited numbers of big box retailers that will come in, in those areas. By allowing this climate-controlled storage facility, a special use permit, it would enhance the property value, the tax basis, and adjoining properties. This will provide a service to the community and what is, says there in the last sentence. But just as important as the values it will enhance, it will also provide a service community that is currently undersupplied in this market and referenced in our feasibility study, which is included in this packet that we had completed by a storage feasibility professional, which is established to this application under the executive summaries and opinion sections on page nine and 10 of that, of that packet. Staff has received, also received a real estate opinion letter by Carolina Commercial, which is in this pack as well, and believes the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. D, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site, design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity. That was the applicant's statement. Staff believes the proposed indoor compartmentalized storage business upon approval by city council tonight will be in harmony with the adjacent uses by its location on NC 2427 Bypass East and East Main. Furthermore, the business has at least two entrances to the above-mentioned roadways, also due to the compartmentalized storage spaces having indoor access and operated within its own spaces within the building. Staff believes the scale and site design are in harmony with adjacent uses. Lastly, operating hours and characteristics will be similar to surrounding businesses. Therefore, staff believes the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses. E, be in general conformance with the adopted plans. The statement by the applicant, the footprint of the building is remaining the same as you've seen on the site plan. So for staff comment, based on the 2028 future land use map and plant, and planned staff believes the intended use meets the commercial area classification stating other heavy uses may include many warehouses and automobile sales lots. Location, the proposed use has access to major thoroughfares, which is desired in the future, future land use plan. Overall, staff believes this use, if approved, is in general conformance with the, with the adopted plans. Additional conditions or requirements, city council may approve special use applications with additional conditions or requirements based upon the following, so as to assure that the aforementioned criteria have been addressed. A, placement, specific placement of primary and/or accessory structures and or uses. Applicant's statement, the footprint of the building is remaining the same. The staff believes the use will be located within the building footprint and confined to its own space within the structure. B, parking spaces with ingress and egress located on, off, or located of on-site parking designated loading area and means of ingress and egress for all vehicles, including service vehicles. Applicant's statement, the footprint of the building is remaining the same and has an abundance of parking, as this was a former shopping mall and a storage business requires very little parking. Staff believes the existing parking and entrances on the property will not be changing. The indoor climate-controlled storage business will have two entrances located on either side, one on the front and one on the back. C, environmental impact, compliance with laws, including but not limited to floodplain and watershed regulations. Again, staff, applicant stated, the footprint of the building is remaining the same. Staff feel the subject, the subject property is not located in the regulated floodplain, while a portion of the property is located in the regulated watershed. No change to impervious surfaces will be occurring for this project. D, screening, buffering, and landscaping. Installation of screening, buffering, fencing, and landscaping where necessary to protect adjacent property. Applicant's statement, the entire center, not just the storage operation, will be getting a new landscaping around the entire center to enhance the look and will be in court, in accordance with all zoning regulation. Staff believes that because the compartmentalized storage will be located on the inside of the existing structure without exterior access to storage units, the property meets the intent of the zoning ordinance for required fencing. Thus, the applicant should not need to install a fence. Lastly, the applicant states he will conform to landscaping and requirements per the zoning ordinance. Effect on nearby properties, effects of proposed use on nearby properties, including but not limited to the effects of noise, odor, lighting, and traffic. Applicant stated, there will be no effects on nearby properties in any way, including noise, odor, lighting, or traffic on adjoining properties. Staff believes based on the intended use being located within existing structure, nearby properties will have low to no impact to noise and odor. On page 14 of the applicant's submitted feasibility study, it was mentioned that the site had very good access for travelers from NC 2427 bypass onto the site. Once again, staff believes there will be no increased, increased effect of noise, odor, lighting, and/or traffic on nearby properties. F, compatibility, the level of general compatibility with nearby properties and impacted neighborhoods, including but not limited to the appropriateness of scale, design, and use in relationship to other properties. Once again, the applicant stated, the footprint of the building is remaining the same. Staff believes the proposed use is in general compatibility with nearby properties because the use is intended to be within a portion of the existing building along with the other portion of the building still allowing for retail uses. G, consistency with policy. Consistency with the City of Almarl Land Use Plan and applicable area plan overlay purposes and zoning district intent in chapter 92 zoning regulations. The footprint of the building for the applicant is remaining the same and is currently in compliance with all zoning regulations. Staff believes this use to be consistent with the future land use plan, the future land use map, and zoning district intent of the zoning regulations, more specifically fitting the commercial area definition as a heavy use allowed for the future land use plan. In addition, the property being located within existing commercial area on the future land use, future land use map. Lastly, meeting the intent and purpose of the additional requirements in section 92.102 GHBD C for individualized, compartmentalized, controlled storage units. H, other factors, any, any other review factors which the city council considers to be appropriate to the property in question. Applicant's statement, the property has sat vacant for many years on one of the most visible corners in Almarl. As a lifelong resident here, it excites me to improve this area we all live in. For years, we have all wanted to see that center revived. As an example of what we have done so far, you can reference the new NC DMV tag office strip center we just remodeled and leased to four fantastic new businesses that are thriving. This is what I look forward to doing at the old mall with a mix of mostly retail and storage. It is of staff's opinion that the special use permit meets all of the above criteria and the applicant intends to comply with all zoning regulations set forth by the zoning ordinance.
Counsel, this is a quasi-judicial hearing and we will hear evidence that has to be competent, material, and substantial. Anyone who testifies must have standing and if there's any question of where that person has standing, our city attorney will make that decision. In just a minute, we will allow the applicant to come up and make a presentation. But first I need to ask, is there any council member that has any conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed or you need to be excused? Or have you had any communications that need to be disclosed before we proceed? Okay. I will invite the applicant to come up and make his presentation.
Thanks for the opportunity to be able to speak to you tonight. If you're unfamiliar with what our real estate development company has done over the past 20 years, I'd like to take you through a little history and kind of bring you to where we're at now. For the last 20 years, some of the properties that we have taken, I'll start with the Delco Plaza, which is where the Gold's Gym is located at. We took that property that was less than 4% leased at the time and took it from what I could say, very. it from what I could say very dilapidated property, had a ton of challenges around it, to a hundred percent occupied within about four years. We moved to the Tractor Supply Center that was less than fifty percent occupied, took it to a hundred percent occupied. And what we're doing is in the Delco Plaza especially, all of those tenants except one were local Almarl resident-owned businesses, which we were pretty proud of doing that. We took the Five Points Property Holdings, which is the old Pontiac Point Building, and we're doing these as leasing or putting operating businesses in. So we put Five Points Restaurant into that building, brought it back. That's a very thriving business for us now. And then we did the DMV Building, I think, which turned out really well. The challenge with this property, it's one hundred and forty-two thousand square feet, and I think this is why the the past developer just locked the doors. When we went in, there were payphones on the walls, Apple computers in the back, and it was just locked. So I think the challenge is we have one hundred and forty-two thousand square feet is how can we renovate the property, operate the property, and lease it at competitive rates and still do all the upfits required? For example, the it needs a new roof now, it's a million dollars just to put the roof on. That's just starters. So a challenge was, what can we do with all this low-density space, which is the old mall, still keep retail across the front, but then utilize the back to generate some revenue that would allow us to do these renovations and bring that property back? And so but then the second part of that was, and then what do we what do we not have here that could be useful? And kind of to give you an idea, like Delco Plaza, we put the URI Medical Center in there, put several doctors in there, which is not a traditional retail use, but it worked out extremely well. So as we had the had the study done, we realized there's not any climate-controlled storage. There's plenty of storage in Almarl, not climate-controlled. So we felt like this was a great use. We looked at old vacant malls and other areas of what are they doing? And some of them are taking the whole entire thing and turning it into storage, which is not what we want to do. We're looking for something that'll supplement the income and the renovation expense by providing some income to come in through that area. So that's where we came up with the climate control. And I attached the 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 study we have, which recommended we move forward with the project. And the company we hired, they operate one hundred and fifty storage facilities throughout the U.S. And when you hire them to do the to do the study, eighty percent of the time, it comes back, do not proceed with the project. So we got to proceed with that.
Do not proceed.
Do not proceed. He told us that before he paid us to do the study, chances are it's going to come back. You're not do not move forward, however they said move forward with this.
If I'm looking at your proposal here and you comment you just made, how much will not be retail across the front? The old Hibbit, the Hibbit part will not be retail now?
Let me pull that floor plan up. So can you see the mouse as I'm moving it?
Yes.
So I don't know if you saw the proposed floor plan. This area right in here, I don't know if you're familiar, but Goodwill is going to take this space here. And I don't know if you're familiar with the Goodwill operation over in Charlotte. They have, I think, are operating eighteen locations. They're pretty, I don't think it's Goodwill of the past. It's it's a new concept there. It's really neat. They're going into this space. So we're going to.
Hold on, Dusty. Is that as a Goodwill storefront?
That's correct. It's a Goodwill storefront. So this area here will so.
The little sign.
Right.
Yeah.
Only way to use that is.
Well, but I didn't know if it was, when I saw it on here, I was about to ask that question, too. Will part of that be storefront and part of that storage for them as well?
Yeah. So this area right here is the front of the old J.C. Penney's.
Right.
And the entrance sets about right here. So we're going to close that entrance up. We'll move Goodwill to have a new entrance here. And then the entrance to the storage, because part of this, we do want the the storage to be a viable business, and it needs some storefront visibility. So we'll create a new entrance here for the storage. Goodwill will have their entrance on the far right. And then we're going to leave, I know it shows storage here, we're going to leave this Hibbit space as retail. We're going to keep these two as retail. And as, you know, some of the stuff Matt talked about with retail strategy, some of those tenants he's talking about, we're having those discussions with some of those tenants right now for these spaces. And, you know, he brought up another point, too. I don't know if you guys remember, he said, it's very hard to find forty and fifty thousand square-foot retailers to take space down. He's right. We run the same circles at ICSC, we're a part of that. Same stuff. He's right. It's hard to find tenants at that space.
So may I ask a question? So go back to, I love wherever the mouse is there, the two retail spaces, Hibbit, those two right.
Yeah, so this was the old shoe show.
Right.
That's Maurice's, and that was Hibbit.
Okay. So you're going to, even though Hibbit shows, you show storage there, you're probably not? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. So the the storage will, if you will enter here, the storage in the J.C. Penney's, and it will feed into all the back mall. And then there'll be also be an entrance for customers to use.
Okay, so go back to Hibbit again. So you've got a possibility of three storefronts there that could still be part of the mall as we know it.
And four, if you include Goodwill.
Right.
Right.
With the storefront, is there back room with any of that?
Is there?
Is there back room? Is there storage with either of those three that would not be part of the storefront? For instance, is that restrooms behind that one where your mouse is go up?
Right there.
No, 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 no. There.
Yep. That's that's an existing floor plan. So the restrooms are here.
Gotcha.
And then there's some more that aren't drawn correctly here.
So part of those might be storage, if you will, for those storefronts? Is that what?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's correct.
That's what I'm saying, backroom, backroom for storage.
So right, right here, I think these walls have been removed. There's a wall that comes right there, and there's existing bathrooms that are there right now. But, you know, when we had this planned on, what we realized is we've gotten a lot of interest on smaller retail fronts, and we've, listen, if we had retail that would fill this, we wouldn't be doing storage. So we would prefer to do the retail in the front. That's what we would prefer to do. So this will be a retail space.
So as we're proceeding tonight, your special permit request will be modifying that to retail.
It'll be for the, it'll be, yes, that's correct.
Anything further? Counsel, have any questions of the applicant? I have no one else signed up to speak, but again, does anyone care to speak for or against special use permit?
Move to closed public hearing.
It is not a public.
I'm sorry.
Counsel, now we can go, I don't, we do not have an expert witness to testify, right? Counsel, it's time to go into rebuttal. Time for you to have any comments with deliberation. We have nothing for rebuttal, so deliberation into your decision. Anything to deliberate, counsel, before I start calling out the questions?
So before he goes into questions, the condition will be, it looks like to me that there are three.
There are A, B, C, D, and E, so there are five. You'll be voting individually.
Right.
On each one of the.
I understand that. I'm back to the pick, I'm back, I'm going back to the picture again, because I want to know exactly if, I want to make sure that it looks like to me, besides Goodwill, there are three other storefronts going to be left open.
That is correct. And one thing that's going to be important to for counsel to take into consideration in the vote is that there is no access from each individual store into the compartmentalized storage, basically because the intent is, is that there will be no retail uses on the premise. And so that wall, what that does is keep that separated from on the premise. And really, I think the intent is to keep people from taking a storage unit space and saying, I'm going to sell this out of unit one, I'm going to sell this out of unit two. But to keep that kind of set is that when you make that vote or that recommendation, say that it is separated, that retail space will be separated from the individualized compartmentalized storage.
Further comments? Move to questions. Number one, and we have to vote on these individually, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided. If counsel wants to look on page three and four, that's their answers to each of these questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. B, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. C, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, the use be a public necessity.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. D, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion?
Is have, did we hear in anything that was testified about hours of operation? And I just am asking that. I don't remember if we did.
Think it's going to be consistent with adjoining business.
Staff, you want to comment or?
If you want to speak on my.
Applicant, either one?
There will be operating hours that will be consistent with the, they will have twenty-four hour access to get into their units.
And do we need that? I mean, because that, that is not, well, twenty-four hours is not consistent with what is right there. I mean, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, you know?
I've never heard of these storage units not being twenty-four hours.
Well, what I'm saying, it is, storage units are, but if you look at what number four says, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site, site design, and hours of operation. I'm just throwing that out there to make sure that we are all on the same page.
We're all on the same page.
For the sake of it, I work.
Well, I think let's include the twenty-four hour access for the climate-controlled storage, but by no means do I want to limit retail.
Right. No, I don't either. I just pay attention to detail.
Well, operating characteristics, I think that's characteristic of a storage.
Storage unit.
You want to amend the motion, Your Honor, to put twenty-four hours? Or is it fine like it is?
I think I got Dry and Hunt is the motion. You're good with that, but you want to add in that that the the storage units can be used twenty-four hours? Would you amend your motion to include that?
I will, yes, sir.
And you also, okay. And Hunt agrees also. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And E, be in general conformance with adopted plan.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion?
And do we need to be specific as to that third retail space or that fourth retail space since that was?
I think we can believe the man.
I I know we can, and I hope, Dusty, nothing happens to you between the time tonight and any time else, but do we want that in there, you all? Just throwing that out there.
I have no problem with amending the motion, Mr. Aldridge, if you would like to do that.
I'm good with where it is.
He has testified that that's what he's going to do. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we approve special use permit twenty-three oh one. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And we move to ten, B, Resolution twenty-three twelve, to join and incorporate, excuse me, my fault, eleven B, major subdivision twenty-three oh two Brookwood Park.
Okay. MJSR twenty-three dash oh two Brookwood Park. This is a proposed major cluster subdivision of one hundred and sixty-eight single-family detached lots on fifty-eight acres on three parcels at Anderson Church Church Road and Woodhaven Drive. Planning Board did hear the proposed rezon, I should not say rezoning, proposed subdivision on June first, twenty twenty-three, and unanimously voted to recommend approval of the subdivision with staff-recommended conditions. The applicant is Transsec Development, and as I mentioned, this was fifty-eight acres, one hundred and sixty-eight lots. It is being done as a cluster subdivision. If this would move here. Have to zoom out a little bit. This is, this is sideways. I guess I can turn it for you for some orientation here. This is Anderson Grove Church Road. This is the Anderson Ridge, I guess, neighborhood across the street. This is currently, this is Woodhaven Drive, currently where Woodhaven Drive ends right around here with the Reserve Apartments and some other apartments across the street there as well. So a new street would extend through and link up with Greenview across from Greenview there at Anderson Grove Church Road. The rest of the roads, rest of the streets on here would be new local streets as well. Everybody's got their orientation on that. I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to regular size. So there are two different phases to this. One phase, which would sit on one side of the stream that's there, and the other would be on the other side to the west. Open space, as is shown in green here. We do have the checklist here. This property is zoned R-ten right now. I believe the maximum number of lots they could get on this, it is in the watershed, so it is limited to three units per acre. I believe the maximum number of lots is around one hundred and seventy-four, so they are under the total maximum that they could have. The primary access to this development will be through six locations, two of them from Anderson Grove Church on the east of the property, and will also have connectivity to Woodhaven Drive to the west with the stubout to the north of the property, and two to the south of the property as well for future connection. Open space as a cluster subdivision, a reduction in the lot determines the minimum amount of open space, as well as the five percent of gross land area that is required in standard subdivision. The total open space provided on this is twenty-one point oh three acres of open space, and based on our calculations, the minimum requirement for open space would be nineteen point four nine. So they do meet that requirement. Detailed lot table has been provided to confirm the reduced lot sizes. The developers believe to have met this requirement, and we do need some additional details in the future on the amenities that are to go into those, as is typical with clustered subdivisions such as this. A traffic impact study was conducted. The TIA calls for a fifty-foot northbound left turn lane from Anderson Grove Road onto Woodhaven Extension. The DOT will have to approve this turn lane, but it's typical that they will require these to be improved to include it in the civil plans following preliminary approval. Developer proposes to utilize city water, sewer, and electric service to serve the proposed site, and utilities are readily available on the site and will be verified to meet standard specifications through civil design and approval process if this is approved Topographical importance, there exists within the boundary an existing stream running diagonally across the property, which is a a blue, is a blue line stream. And additionally, of natural resource significance, the property does sit within the watershed boundary, and lots are subject to watershed rules. I believe we mentioned that before, that this is limited to three units per acre because of that. This development extends Woodhaven Drive as a collector's street from seven forty through Anderson Grove Church Road. The street is proposed to be constructed at the same standards of the existing portion near the Reserve Apartments with a seventy-foot right-of-way, thirty-five-foot wide street between curbing, twelve-foot planting strip, and five-foot sidewalks on either side. Woodlawn Extension, which we're calling it for right now, will connect to Greenview Drive at a four-way intersection on Anderson Grove Church Road, and will serve as a minor collector's street, providing alternative routes for residents in this area. The curvilinear street avoids major stream crossings and will help to slow through traffic as well. All other local streets in the development are proposed as a standard twenty-six foot wide with five-foot wide sidewalk on each side. Those will have a sixty-foot right-of-way as the standard. Um, those will have a 60-foot right-of-way, uh, as the standard. These streets will include ditches for drainage as is consistent with, with watershed development. Cross-section typical for both of these road types has been provided in the plans, uh, and sidewalks are shown on both sides of the streets, internally as well as along the adjacent right-of-way externally, um, which would be, in this case, along Anderson Grove Church Road, for the duration of the development. Typical setbacks for residential homes in R10 are 30 feet in the front, 10 on the sides, 20 on the side of the street, and 30 in the rear. In cluster developments, these can be reduced by up to 50%. Developers shown setbacks as keeping those as 30 feet in the front, uh, 30 feet in the rear, um, reducing them to five feet on sides with 15 feet on the corner side.
What was the width of the lot?
Uh, the lots vary, uh, between, I think they're about 55 to 45, something like that. 55 to 45, 40, 45 or 44 to 55. There's some that are a little bit larger. Have to go back up.
How, how wide would a house be on a lot that size?
Well, with five-foot setbacks on either side, you know, 30 to 35 feet, so.
That is pretty close to what Morgan Ridge is, is that correct?
Yeah.
That helps you, Chris?
Yeah.
Cause I think. These are not, these are not subsidized houses, are they?
We don't get into that during the subdivision process, um, not, not that I know of. I haven't heard anything about that.
And you said there's between houses 10 feet?
Uh, yeah, minimum.
Yeah.
Minimum on this is what they've got proposed.
Does that, how does that, does that work in with fire?
Yeah.
That close together?
Not to keep, they're not a huge fan of it, but at the same time, there's no code against it.
So we don't have anything that says it has to be?
No, and before we didn't have anything, back, back when we, when we did the first phase of Morgan Ridge.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't have anything. We got some lots there that are like 3,800 square feet. We've, you're not gonna find anything like that in R10 anymore. The minimum will be, the minimum you can do is half of, half of whatever is allowed there previously.
Right, okay.
So will we do that one more time? Do that back again?
The minimum, the minimum you're allowed to have there is half of what is minimum setback reduction, the minimum setbacks and the minimum lot size, the lowest you can go is half of what the standard is. So if you've got a 10,000 square foot lot, do what?
Does this one meet that?
Yes, this meets that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there, you have a minimum 10-foot side setback in R10, they're gonna go down to five. Um, the front and the rear remain the same, as is proposed. Typical lot sizes for single-family homes in R10 is 10,000 square feet. As we mentioned, cluster developments, this can be reduced by up to 50, uh, to accommodate single-family residents. Small, smallest lot size can be 5,000 square feet, uh, the developers met this requirement. Uh, staffs reviewed all plans, has applied feedback with the developer on this proposal. Um, there are some minor, uh, revisions, um, one thing to note on here, um, is that, uh, planning board actually picked up on this. We haven't, I don't, my knowledge, haven't had this happen, because we haven't had a lot of subdivisions, um, in the watershed, and those that we have have not been, uh, next to or close to blue line streams. But there is a, a buffer requirement in there for higher density, um, development, um, that has to be 100 feet away from the stream. Um, that will probably affect a handful of lots here, and we have listed those out. Uh, I believe there's four, four or five that it most likely will need to be moved around. And then there could be another four or five as well, um, that may affect, depending on how they, um, have to grade those down.
You've got 10 actually mentioned.
Right, there's five, there's four or five that are, they're gonna, there's five that are gonna have to be moved, and then there's another five that potentially, just depending on, on what happens with that.
Right.
And, uh, that's not uncommon, um, once you get into, um, civil design and everything, that they have to move a lot around. We usually only, uh, would consider that a major revision if they try to add density. Um, you can take them away, you can move them slightly around here or there, but you can't add density. And, and we've left that as a, uh, a, a condition in here to, uh, to address that, um, during the civil set. Um, as well, the, uh, renumbering of, uh, Phase One, um, needs to be consistent throughout the plans, and, and it is for the most part. There is one page on the plans where Phase One, the numbering does not match up. Um, and, uh, so that will need to be, that will need to be fixed. Let's see. The other items, and, and just to back up, we, we would recommend for approval, um, with those two conditions, and then the other, some other items as well. Uh, stub road B to the edge of the property, uh, should be stubbed to the edge of the property line, or at least to the edge of that tie-in to the north. Um, we typically allow for, depending on what the grading is, you know, within, you know, 30 or 40 feet, um, with that tie-in there. Show turn lane on Anderson Grove Church, uh, as required by DOT, that will need to be in the civil plan. Uh, submit the open space and amenities plan, and submit, as is typical, the draft of covenant and deed restrictions, deed restrictions covering long-term maintenance. I'll back up to the, the plan for you. Any questions of me?
Please, so back to the draw, that, there you go.
Uh, let me, let me, let me get back to.
And over.
Get you the, yeah, there you go.
There you go. So once again, show me the entrances and the exits.
All right, this is, let me reorient this for you a little bit.
Because that's very important.
Sure, sure. So over here on the right, um, you have, um, Anderson Ridge, the neighborhood. And, um, this is Anderson Grove Church Road right here, going down here towards 2427 at the bottom.
And where's the church? Is, is?
Down, down here.
The church at 2427?
Yeah, yeah, it's down that way.
Okay.
Um, this is all that, right now, if you're driving past Anderson, is it Anderson Ridge Neighborhood? Yeah, driving past Anderson Ridge.
It's on the right.
It's on the right. There's a lot of trees there. You can see there's a couple little spaces you can see, and there's fields out there, that's where this is. And the other end of this would be Woodhaven, uh, where the Reserve Apartments are.
Right.
That right-of-way that we've got through there will go directly in there. So it would come in here and then kind of turn, and then turn back again towards Anderson Grove Church Road.
There's property between the end of Road A and Road B before you get to Brookwood Industrial Park. Go the other way. Where the, on the lower part, where the both roads end?
Yes.
They're not getting all the way to the Brookwood subdivision road. There's property between there and the road.
Yes, there's a, yeah, sorry, let me, let me try to.
And, and we, that is, and there is a flood zone through.
There's actually not, um, there's, there's not, uh, FEMA-designated flood plain, not in, not in this, uh, not in the development portion there. There is some further down, I believe.
Okay.
It's in the watershed, though.
Okay.
Okay, we, we, we put this in here, this might be a little more helpful. Let me, let me pull this up. Okay, so these, and, these are, these are roads, the, unfortunately, we did them in blue, but these are, these would be the new roads here. This right here, Mayor, is, uh, was originally part of this parcel, I think. It was all together, um, and there's a business right there, and then charter is down here.
Okay, that's what, that's what.
Yeah.
All right, my understanding is what we're doing tonight, all zoning's been approved, there is no annexation. The only thing we're looking at tonight is the subdivision and the roads and the conditions that you're putting on here.
That's right.
Nothing else for council to discuss.
That's right. Do you approve the preliminary, and then we'll start working with them on their civil design before they get into final plating and everything.
Discussion, council.
And the conditions that you're wanting, specifically, I've got the last page, but are those what? I've got the very last, there you go.
Yeah, um, a, a couple of these are pretty typical, um, just the way that we do with the clusters and everything, with all the open space. A lot of times, it's, it's getting, you know, some of this stuff kind of pulled together in the preliminary phase is a little bit hard. We put that in there just to make sure it's kind of, make sure it still goes in. Uh, the, uh, turn lane, uh, getting DOT, uh, on that, uh, minor thing with the stub road, just kind of continuing that on as close to the end there as possible. Uh, this is a kind of a clerical issue, just addressing those, uh, the, the phase, the phases in the lots, and then probably one of the big, big ones would be just moving around a handful of these lots, um, on the site there so that they can, uh, stay away from that, uh, that stream buffer.
The council, if you decide to move forward, you would need to, motion would need to include those six, like six conditions that staff has recommended. Any further discussion?
Sometimes when we're looking at this sort of thing, we gotta feel for what kind of houses are gonna be in there, because we want them to be pretty nice homes. Is there anything to be said about what price homes these are gonna be?
Uh, Mayor, Chris, uh, Chris, you can, uh, you're welcome to ask that, that, that's something that staff stays out of. That's really not, uh, the purview of, of my department, and honestly, while everybody's interested in it, it's, it's not something I really think is the purview of, uh, of the city to, to ask the price points on those. Just my personal opinion.
Well. Counsel, what do you want to do with Major Subdivision 2302?
Uh, Mayor, the, uh, the developer's here as well, if he, if.
Okay. The developer's here, if anyone has any questions to him, or if you want to make any presentation. He's here if you have any comments.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure they had a chance.
Counsel, how you wish to proceed? Let me ask this, council basically doesn't have a lot of choice if it meets our ordinance, is correct?
It's an administrative approval. If you got some concerns that there's something that hasn't been met in there, then that would be.
There's another condition council wants to put on there, something they could do, but otherwise it meets our ordinance.
The conditions need to be related directly to our ordinance, basically. If there's something that's not being met, a condition that that be met, or a denial so that it can be met later, or something like that. But that's really what you need to focus on is the criteria, uh, for approval of this. This is administrative in nature versus the legislative approval for rezoning, or a quasi-judicial approval for, uh, SCP. We've really run a gambit of approvals tonight.
So we're, we're not changing the zoning or anything?
No, 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 this property's already inside the city, it's already zoned, they just want to develop their property.
I wonder why we even having to act on it?
Well, you have to act, our ordinance says, our policy is you have to act on the subdivision.
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, and the one above it there.
Yeah.
So just one question, I mean, the issue of, um, the footage between properties, that is within our ordinance, that is within our current ordinance.
The way it's written is that it is their choice to go down to five feet, to go down to half right there.
And that's something we agreed on, that we have agreed, so, and that's.
That's right, and that was, that was a, that was a change to address some of the stuff that we saw previously with, with the, the previous cluster ordinance. There was no limit, what, how much they could reduce the sizes or the setbacks, so we made it 50% instead. So that's, that's how we have that now.
Gotcha.
The only thing I'll, the only thing I'll say is I'll say what I said the, the last time, and, and I know that if this, this is nothing against this specific, um, project, but here we are, another 168 homes, at some point in time, this council and this staff, we're gonna have to have a, we're gonna have to have a heart-to-heart. Uh, we've got right now probably between 35 to 4,000 homes approved in the city, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I don't, yeah, don't have the exact number, but it's up there, yeah.
It's up there, yeah, and, and my, my biggest concern, again, this is nothing against anybody that's in this room specifically tonight. My biggest concern is if two or three or four of these developers start moving dirt at one time, we're done. We do not have the infrastructure, so again, I'm, I don't, I don't have all the answers, I'm just saying, at some point in time, city staff, this council, we all need to sit down and we need to figure this thing out, because just sitting up here, another 168 homes is, if, if we have more than one developer, or even one developer that, that starts building three or 400 houses, we don't have the infrastructure to support it.
When you say infrastructure, clarify what you're talking about. We have water, sewer, land.
Education, schools, police.
I wanted to clarify what you were talking about.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
It's, yeah, water's not the issue. Police officers, firefighters, school buildings, teachers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And some of those things, we don't have anything to do with, but I agree with you, Bill, that we've got to look at that, because we, you know, we're looking at three, still three fire departments, and I mean, I know, I feel the same way.
Counsel, I entertain a motion.
But there's nothing that we can do, because everything, it, it meets where, I mean, this current, I mean, it meets everything.
It's been previously approved for all the cluster and all the zoning, so.
And these are, I mean, they're, they're, this is administrative, you're making sure they check the boxes.
Right.
Some cities, councils don't even see them, the planning board would review them or something else like that, so, or committees. But, um, our ordinance has it that it goes to you guys, um, count, uh, sorry, I get tired, planning board, and then to council. And, uh, and it's just, you know, making sure the boxes are all checked on it and everything.
In that case, move to approve Major Subdivision 2302, Brookwood Park, with the conditions of one, renumber Phase One lots to be consistent with the plans. Move lots 31, 39, 40, 80, 60, and particularly 24, 25, 32, 88, 89. So there's no grading within 100 feet of stream buffer, stub road B, uh, to the edge of property line, or edge of the tie-in to the north. Show turn lane Anderson Grove Church as required by DOT, submit open space amenities plan. Submit draft of covenant and deed restrictions covering long-term maintenance.
Second.
Now, a motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving 11C, consider appointments for the boards and commissions. Counsel, you have a packet in your agenda, and I'm gonna go by each board. We have, uh, multiple things to do on each one. Planning and zoning board, you have, uh, four people.
I just, I've got something ready to be, to be.
Four people to be reappointed, and then we'll, we'll look at the additional. Reappointed is Kevin Holbrook, Julie Curtis, Michael Shapiro, and Joey Gathens until the July 25th partial term. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I would like to be specific on those, because there are some, um, alternates that could be moved up. So if you look at the list that they've given us, Joey, Kevin, Benny Bowers is, does not want to be, cannot be reappointed. Julie Curtis is an alternate, and Shapiro is an alternate. Tim Scott, that seat is now vacated. So we actually have, um, two new seats, the one that Tim Scott, because of his death, and Benny Bowers, there's two there that are not. So I would ask that we reappoint Joey Gathens, reappoint Kevin Holbrook, that we put Julie Curtis in the spot that Tim Scott has vac.
Go, go ahead, go ahead and.
Tim Scott is, is open because of Tim Scott, she is our first alternate, I would say pull her up there, and then put Micah Shapiro in the slot that Benny Bowers has vac, has, um, will be vacated.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion?
Did you say that Joey Gathens not eligible for?
No, 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 he is eligible. No, there's nobody that's not.
We move forward with your motion there. What, what will we have left?
We will have the three alternates that we need, three alternates.
And so we've already moved Marcus on, uh?
Marcus is a full-time, I mean, full.
He started out.
A full-timer.
Yeah.
Right.
And that will take care of the seats, and then I have some for alternates that I would like to put on there, too.
I would ask that you hold off on all your alternate positions, because I, I did have somebody that I was gonna recommend to fill Tim Scott, but I didn't get the application turned in, in time.
We, we know, we have one application in, and we know somebody else is gonna submit as well, um, so if, if you want to hold off, we can take care of the alternates at another meeting.
All those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and we're gonna hold off on all the alternates?
All, all the alternates?
Okay.
All of them?
Take it, take all the applicants in consideration, so we can get a full, full review of all the applicants, out of all fairness.
We'll move to Historic Resources Commission. We have two to be reappointed, John Crawford and Tim Johnson.
I move, we reappoint John Crawford and Tim Johnson.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We have two vacancies to fill.
And I would move that Lauren Wagner and Stephen T-R-U-E-A-U be appointed. And I would move that Lauren Wagner and Steven Trueau be appointed to those two vacancies. Trueau, his application is within the body of the packet.
Okay. Did you get that, Ms. Stone?
I didn't get it. What did you say?
Steven, his last name is Trudeau, and his application is within the body of our packet. Trudeau, maybe?
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Parks and Rec, we have one to be reappointed, two to be reappointed, Lawrence Larry Dariah and Julie Curtis.
Move approval of those two, and then I have three more for those slots that need to be.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to reappoint Dariah and Curtis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
I asked a question earlier today for clarification, and Ms. Stone reported back that we do not, with Parks and Rec, we used to have it by districts and some open and that kind of thing. And because I didn't see any of that description on the applications, et cetera, et cetera, I ask, and it's no longer that we have to have them by district. So with that in mind, I would like to, actually, I took all the applications and made a spreadsheet, and these next three people asked to be on Parks and Rec. David Sawyers, Janet EKIS, and I think it is D-A-V-A-E Moore, last name Moore, D-E-V-A-E.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the Tree Commission. Following members are, can be reappointed, Sandra Rushing and Hannah Hearn.
Hannah does not.
Miss Hearn does not want to be reappointed, so we would reappoint Ms. Rushing, and then we would need one, lead two, actually. Do I have a motion to approve Ms. Rushing?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, I have two spots to fill. One filled, one of Miss Hearn is vacating, and a vacancy that's already on the seat.
So if we are holding the alternates to planning and zoning, I would ask that we hold those as well, because like I indicated, I did make a spreadsheet with all the folks of the ones that we already had, and that wanted to serve on some boards. And I want to make sure that everybody that we already have gets something. So I would just hold off on that.
Moving on to, is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Moving on to ADDC, the board has recommended that we appoint Bradley Udi, and the council does confirm the appointments of the ADDC board.
Move, move, confirm Bradley Udi.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion?
I would like to, I've got, I've got the Article, Article 4 of the Bylaws for the ADDC, composition of the board shall be a minimum of nine and a maximum of 13. And it talks about that the mayor and the city manager and the EDC manager, the president of the ADBA, and representative from the chamber are already on there, within a minimum of four or a max of seven other folks. So I would say, I would ask that we, in addition to Bradley, that we put on there Amy Burrell, B-U-R-R-E-L-L. And in her application, she served on the Downtown Development Commission in a small Main Street town in Georgia. And I think bringing someone else in here, an additional person in here, would bring another level of involvement. So in addition to Bradley, I would ask that we appoint Amy.
I'll accept that as a, as a part of a motion.
Thank you.
So, did you accept this second? Oh, councilmate, excuse me. Councilmember Bramlett said that is Bradley Udi and Amy Burrell, and council, council is agreeable. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, I believe that concludes our boards for tonight.
Help me in on the beach trip.
11D, Discussion Lectures Conference. I'm going to ask all of you to tell Cindy privately what you want to do, but they have changed their policy. If your spouse is going, you have to let them know so they can make the registration now for your spouse. And remember, council is responsible for paying for the spouse's share.
And the reason I wanted it on there tonight is that early registration ends before we come back together. And particularly for Mr. Hunt's information, I wanted to make sure that he realized what this was and that he had an opportunity to go, unlike, you know, didn't get to, to the league meeting. It was right next door, because we probably didn't talk about it a lot. You might want to do this.
Council, we've got a closed session. Does anyone have anything to bring, bring to us tonight without us going by one by one? Now, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 3 and 6, to consult with the city attorney and personnel.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We go back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hunt.
Dry.
Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We met in closed session to consult with the city attorney and personnel, and come out of closed session, I'll entertain a motion from Councilmember Bramlett.
Mayor, I'll move that we give our city manager a $5,000 raise.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett to a $5,000 raise for our city manager. Do I have a second?
Second. Second by, was that Councilmember Dry?
Yes, sir. First by Dry. Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Three, four. Opposed? Four, two. All right. Council, we need to adjourn for our discussion recess. We're going to recess until recess Monday night at 6:00 PM, Bill. You'd be here at 6:00? At 6:00 PM to discuss the pool, life jacket issue, and to consider the Yadkin PD Water Management Group Agreement Resolution. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.